Okay, I would like, sounds like we're ready to go here, everyone's logged in. So I would like to make a motion to open the workshop meeting tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, member Loda?
Hi.
Member Katura?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
And Chairperson Valistra?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so some topics for discussion for the workshop session tonight, I was hoping Steve could give us a little bit of background on some of the sign code issues, that will be before us later. Steve, are you able to do that? I sent you a couple emails for some things, I was hoping you can maybe clarify for the board.
Yeah, what do you need, Justin?
Uh, just kind of a clarification of what, so we have an application for some sign variances tonight. They're constructing a total of six signs, I was just hoping you could kind of clarify what the code violations are, what signs are allowed to erect, and whether we need two variances or one.
Um, I'm not quite sure about the two variances thing, but I do know that they're, they have requested more signs than is technically allowed by the code. You're technically only allowed one sign whose square footage is equal or less than the linear footage on the face of the building at a maximum of thirty square feet. And they are requesting the five or four smaller signs, and then a larger sign for the center. So technically, they're seeking a variance for four smaller signs to go across the face. They have no window availability for any advertising on their building because they're all double hungs with grids. And the doors themselves also have grids, so there's no other option, it's a really um, kind of a unique building, in the way the sofas are and the posts and everything on front. Um, it'll be purely up to the board, and you know, I mean, as far as how they deal with this. I didn't know, I mean technically the sign, she really wanted one on the roof. Um, and it's not a projection sign. So I don't know where that one would technically fall into the code.
Okay, I saw a code citation where you're not allowed to mount a sign on a roof.
Right, and they, just, just kind of for information's sake, Lisa from the HPB had stopped and conversed with the applicant. And the feeling is the HPB doesn't really like the roof mounted sign either. So the, the option, the option is that she would hang a a smaller downsized main sign in the center, and then four smaller signs in each of the other openings on the front face of the building.
Uh, okay, so is the application possibly changing?
It, it may modify, I, I told her, you go for, you know, you go for a hundred percent, and, and then go from there. Mindy?
Yeah, I have a question, is, is this building serviced more than one commercial establishment? Or is it the whole building going to be occupied by one business?
There's technically three businesses in the building, but the upper that faces the canal is one business, the other two businesses are down below, in behind the building. And just for reference sake, I did receive, and I didn't get a chance to, actually I got busy and didn't think of it, but I did receive the Monroe County planning approval for this application today. And I can forward that everybody, to everybody tomorrow.
Because there, there are different standards depending upon whether it's a single commercial building or a multiple commercial building.
Correct, but it still doesn't meet the, the standard of multiple commercials to allow all those multiple signs on the upper front face.
Right.
Okay, so you said there's three businesses there, so it's a multiple commercial building, is that correct, Steve?
Correct.
Okay, um, now, I, you mentioned Lisa Cove on the HPB, I did send her an email a couple weeks ago, alerting her to this. Uh, the prior time we had a sign variance application, we had a HPB member that was able to attend our meeting. And we found that very helpful because they were able to discuss alternate locations for signs. This was for the, for those of you that were on the board back then. Uh, that was the guaranteed rate application where they wanted a large sign in the front yard. And we took a look at, well, where could you mount it on the building? And we ultimately settled on hanging it from the eaves over the porch was an acceptable location and made sense to mount it on the building. Um, so I emailed Lisa Cove to give her a heads up about this, and I didn't receive any response from her. So I don't know if anyone from the HPB intends to attend our meeting. Um, I can't tell if anyone's here, but I presume maybe not. So maybe that makes sense, uh, if there's any, I mean, one option we have is we could do a referral to the HPB and ask them for comments if any of them join. I guess another option we have is we could vote on it as we see fit. Um, and I don't know what anyone would like to do, or what they think.
Yeah, a little more info, this, the woman is trying to open the business. There is a time lag for the signs, they are very expensive. So she can't order until decisions are made between tonight and tomorrow night. Susan?
Oh, so, um, I seem to remember that this was Tom Walls? Or Bill Walls, I'm not sure. And, uh, maybe they had a sign on the roof. I, I tried to look, uh, on the internet today, but I couldn't, I couldn't come up with one. But Steve, do you, is there a record of what used to be on that building?
I, I could not find pictures of it, I did probably what you did, I researched through, and yeah. I was trying to find out what was there before, I don't, I mean, there's no indication on that roof unless the roof was redone that there was ever a sign on the roof, I'd see no indication on the shank line.
Joanne, do you remember what the signage was?
No, but I don't think there was anything on the roof.
I don't remember either, other than maybe something above the door, but I don't, I agree, I don't think there was a large sign on the roof.
Yeah, anything above the door would not be seen because of the large overhang. That's, that's the other problem, the, the door literally has about five inches between the top of the door and the ceiling of that overhang, and the overhang is, is quite deep. It's about a four and a half foot patio on there, maybe five foot. So anything that would be mounted, you know, above the door would have to be super thin. Um, there's no room anywhere between the two doors and all those windows on the front to hang any signage in underneath the fascia.
Yeah, I don't know how you take the roof side and hang that down below, you wouldn't be able to walk, walk through.
Pardon, John?
It would be smaller, a smaller version of it, John, and I think the doorway is over to the left.
Right. Right, but it looks like the sidewalk up to the building is right down the center. So any sign you put in that center would have to be equally as small, I think right now they show a little sign that's lunch. But even if you change that, you know, neutral ground coffee, I think it would be so tiny you wouldn't see it.
What I did, what I did, John, is I talked with her about, because right now there's a banner hanging there. If you've noticed, the banner, the banner is too tall. It doesn't allow you even an eighty inch walkthrough. So my suggestion to her was to bring a sign up that would allow an eighty-six inch walkthrough. It would be a little wider and thinner, that had the neutral grounds with her her little logo piece on the top, and then the smaller signs to the side, giving it that old rail station look.
I hear that. So neutral ground would be where lunch is currently hanging?
Pardon?
So when I look at the photo, the lunch sign, the little lunch sign is right in the middle? Is that where you proposed neutral ground? And a, and a, a size between the small ones and the big one that she's proposed for the roof?
Yeah, yeah, that would be downsized, go underneath the sopit on the front and between the center pole. And then the real smaller ones that said like, uh, ice cream, um, events, I don't remember the other ones, but they're, they're on each side of it.
Right.
Hanging, hanging like, um, the guaranteed rate was.
Right.
So this seems very similar to the guaranteed rate situation, uh, where there's limited options on the building to mount it. And so with guaranteed rate, what we decided was reasonable was hanging it from the eaves seemed, uh, which is similar to these five hanging signs here, but they, we only approved the one. Uh, that seemed to be a reasonable option, and preferable to a large freestanding sign, was what we had discussed back then. A freestanding sign in front, I guess, is another possibility that isn't an application before us. But, um, when we took, just going from memory here, and we took a look at um, the guaranteed rate sign, again, that's on Monroe Avenue, right, I'm sorry, that's on Main Street, right across the street from Village Hall. Um, what we were looking for is to grant the minimum possible variance, which we're generally required to do under code. So we wanted something to be the least intrusive and the least, and that particular district, it was important that signage was meant to be small because the buildings there were meant to have a residential character. Um, and so the, I believe the code said that signs could only be like one square feet. And I believe at the time they applied for a six foot long freestanding sign. And we found that out of character with it, and we worked to get something that would help them with their needs, but be more in character with the code and the district. Now, this is a very different district here, and this is a full born commercial district, this isn't, um, designed to have a residential look. And, um, so I'm just bringing that up as, there's some different things to consider here. Um, to bring up another couple applications, for those of you that remember, we had Starbucks and Bank of America come to us before. Um, Starbucks came to us, um, asking for several sign variants, they wanted Starbucks into us, asking for. I'm getting feedback, am I not coming through very well?
I can hear you.
Okay.
It sounded to me like you ordered water.
I'm up for air, Justin.
Uh, does it sound better if I kill video?
Keep talking.
Okay, um, so I was talking about some of our other history with sign variances. We had Bank of America and Starbucks. With Starbucks, they wanted to have three awnings on the front with signs in addition to their large sign on the front of the building. And the discussion we had at the time for Starbucks was, we thought four signs on the front would be too much visual clutter for that area, so we approved, I believe, one on the side of the building, which was a separate facade, and that served the entranceway driveway, and the odd views that you could see from the unique vantage points, um, for all the weird entrances you have to the library building. Um, and then when we took a look at Bank of America, we had a number of variances for them. Uh, we initially worked with them on finding alternatives to a freestanding sign. And they wanted a large freestanding sign initially, and with their corporate colors on it. And after quite a bit of back and forth, I think we eventually ended up with a simple white wooden sign with the Bank of America text on it. And they also asked for variances for a bunch of additional signs, they wanted additional signage. And we found various reasons that that made sense, and we approved the additional signage. Um, again, a lot of it was, uh, pretty much all of it was very particular to the property. And we gave a variance to allow them to construct a sign over the ATM canopy. And we looked at why it was different than the other banks. Um, we also gave them permission for, I believe, a couple, an extra sign on the front facade. Again, I believe that was due to the unique characteristics of the building, they had trees up front that blocked views, and due to the way the building was constructed, it didn't have a normal space to erect a large sign that was visible. Uh, this building is much the same way, it doesn't have a large, um, flat space to erect a sign. Uh, I'm just bringing a few of these up for, for people to remember. Uh, the couple of, Dave and John, you went on the board at the time, but I know Susan and Joanne were, and we had plenty of discussions about these signs back at the time.
Could you remind me, Justin, sign variances, are they permanent, so with Bank of America leaving, is that sign uh, still a part of the property permanently, we would have to approve something that looks similar, or is that gone?
I think we'd have to look at the conditions of approval, if we said that it has to be, the sign has to be exactly as approved, I think it has to be exactly as approved, does that make sense, Mindy?
Yes.
So if they already changed.
The conditions of approval.
Oh, I don't know what the conditions of approval happened to be.
Right, I mean typically what you do though is you, if you're granting an area variance, you grant an area variance from the dimensional requirements, and if you grant a variance for location, you specify where the location is going to be.
So in many respects, a sign approved today for this business would be a sign approved tomorrow for another business, because you're doing it by size, not by, uh, visual, like.
At, at that location, yes.
Yes.
I, I think from any practical point of view, we'd have to honor our history, and if someone else, if, whether it comes before us or not, I think if someone else wants to put up approximately a similar type of sign on the same building for a new owner, I, I think it would typically make sense to grant that if it comes before us, I don't, I think we'd have to come up with a really good reason to deny it, such as it's, um, the, you know, the new materials, or the new appearance of it are really out of touch, such as if we approved one at, say, Bank of America, that was a white freestanding sign with blue letters. If someone came back with a flashing neon sign, then yeah, that might make sense. But if someone else puts up a white sign with similar text on it, I don't know if they have to come back before us or not, but if it did, I think we would be hard pressed to deny it. So I think it makes sense that whatever decision we come up with, uh, I think it makes sense to consider it permanent for the building, is that what you would state, Mindy?
Yes.
Oh, Steve has a question, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
All right, question, this would be for Mindy or for the board. Now, you're saying you're approving location, um, or personally, you know, the number of signs plus location. Can, can there be an option within approval based on another approval? Say, say she still wants to go for the roof mounted sign, or the one centered over the, the, um, the center pillars?
I think any conditions of approval have to be relating to the land. I don't think we, I don't know if we can make a condition of approval for anything else.
What do you mean?
I mean, frequently we'll make a condition of approval, something like that, they get APRB approval if they require it, but we can't, you know, we don't typically say you can have this one or that one, this relief or that relief. You get one or the other.
So, just to step back though, to take this and take this in pieces. Um, setting aside the five little signs under the overhang, Steve, um, is the, is the only issue with the big sign that it's on the roof? In terms of the sign, the size is appropriate?
Yeah, you could not take that same sign and put it down on the front because that's your main entrance, it's a dead center. And that's what I'm saying, if you, you guys say she can do the roof, then HPB disapproves the roof one, she's, she's stuck. So I don't, I guess I'm not understanding why the board couldn't say, all right, we're going to approve five signs with the option of either the roof mounted, or the center over the, the main entrance.
Why don't they go to the HPB first then?
Yeah.
Because then that's another thirty days, and she wants to open her business.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, bad timing.
Yeah.
I thought we were here to help the businesses to start, not, not to hinder them, if there's an option that we could use to help her, I don't see why we wouldn't do that.
Well, right now, we have an application before us. And I mean, we'll see what the applicant wants to say, um, we're under, um, you know, we want to listen to them. Um, this is the first I've heard of a possible alternative, um, action, so. Um, and is it meeting tomorrow too? Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, and if, if Lisa hadn't, you know, if I didn't have more information or that information come in, then, then there would only be one possible application, but she's already gotten indication that the one method of roof mounting that is the likelihood that the HPB is probably not going to approve it.
Yeah, well, so the HPB hasn't discussed it, someone seems to have talked to one member, which is not a view of the entire board. So I, I really don't think we know what the HPB wants, we, we, you, you seem to think what one member may want.
Well, I, I beg to differ, Justin, because when they, when the board chair gives an opinion, I can tell you ninety-nine percent of the time, that's the way the board will, will bend. It's just, it's history, I've been here long enough to know, Justin, that that's the way the world works.
Okay. Is the applicant going to be here tonight, do we know? Do you know if the applicant's going to be here?
I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
Do you know if the applicant's going to attend tonight?
As far as I know, yes, yeah, she actually just, she thought it was live, and I just, I talked to her about a half hour ago, and gave all the information to.
She just signed on, actually, and she has her hand raised if you want to entertain her comment.
And, I don't know.
Well, we're, um, we don't normally hear from applicants in the workshop sessions, it's normally discussing with board members. This seems to be something that, um, we definitely need to talk about during the regular meeting, and I see we're up to six thirty already. But I think we've quickly figured out what some key issues are with this, uh, application. Um, so it will make sense to go over this in the meeting. Um, with that said, does it make sense to end our workshop and go ahead and start the regular meeting?
Yes.
All right. I'm turning my video back on temporarily, if I start having, uh, sounding like I'm talking in a fishbowl again, let me, oh, if that seems to make a difference. Um, all right, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn our workshop session and start the regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Dave Marshall, aye.
Susan Loda, aye.
Joanne. Joanne, Shannon, aye.
Justin Bleacher, aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, so we have um, two applicants before us tonight. Uh, we have seventy-two State Street to wrap up discussion on their garage. So we had, uh, two applications from them, one is an area variance for the garage height, and the other was site plan review for the, um, for construction of the garage and its location. Um, so I think we should start with that application. That's a carryover from last meeting. Um, and then the next one would be discussing the sign, uh, at forty-five Shown Place. So Marina, did, were you able to get a copy of the draft resolutions I forwarded around a few minutes ago, so that you can present them on screen?
Yep, I have them, just one moment.
Okay, well, we don't need to present them yet, but I just wanted to make sure you got them. And hopefully Mindy's had a chance to check some of the seeker citations, and those are, will have a chance. Uh, but I think those are pretty cut and dry. So if we go ahead and start, um, is the applicant for seventy-two State Street here? And can we invite her to speak?
Shannon is on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm able to hear you.
Hello, everyone, again.
Okay, so, um, welcome, Shannon. Thank you for coming back and getting your applications in order, I know this is, um, taken slightly longer than you'd like, uh, but we're, I think everyone's trying to do what we can to go through the process legally, and dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's, uh, to get, um, this application reviewed, and you have a meeting with the HPB tomorrow. So if we approve your applications tonight, I, it sounds like they're in position to approve, um, give you the last approval you'll need tomorrow. And, uh, then you can get to schedule your, um, construction and get your building permit settled. Um, so, so, um, just to give you an introduction here, uh, we talked, we looked at your site plans at our last meeting, and our main concern with those was how they would impact other properties, and whether things complied with code and requirements. And we heard some testimony from the public there. Uh, we have a variance before us, and that has a little bit of a different criteria. Uh, we are concerned about compatibility with community character, but one of the big things we're taking a look at with that is whether you're asking for relief from code, in this case, it's the requirement of that the garage be twelve feet tall. And what we're looking at is, uh, we have five criteria dictated by state law that we have to consider when we look at it. But ultimately, what we're looking at is whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs the impact on the community. And we have the five criteria to look at, you don't have to comply with all five, but we must consider all five, and we will make some findings for them. Now, your architect already wrote some comments pertinent to the five criteria we have to look at, such as, um, compatibility with the historic district and community character and things like that, so we'll consider that as part of our meeting. But I just wanted to give you a little background of what we're looking at, because we look at different things for these two applications.
Cool, great.
Okay, um, do you want, did you want to make any initial statements, Shannon, about the variance application? Uh, we need to resolve the variance application first, as I said, it basically gives you relief from the zoning code requirements that the garage be twelve feet high. And once the, uh, once, if we approve that, then that would eliminate all the code concerns for the site plan approval, and that would be done next. Um, so that's the order in which we're going to go through these. Um, so did you have any introductory statements about, uh, relating to the variance request?
Um, I guess just to, I, we've spoke to these in the past couple meetings, but, um, that, you know, having a, a second floor storage and, and studio space, we wouldn't be able to do that with a twelve foot roof line. Um, and we shared other examples throughout the village, you know, of comparable roof lines to keep in the character of the village. And, you know, we, I think the architect spoke to the pitch and the, the height as well, is keeping it as, uh, complimentary to the character of the village and to the structure itself, um, on the property.
Okay, and I believe we also heard some commentary from the building inspector, Steve. Um, I know, I think you mentioned some of this before, Steve, but since this is on the agenda. Uh, I know, I think you mentioned some of this before, Steve, but since this is on the agenda, can you comment a little bit about, uh, the practicality? Of constructing a garage of this size and, uh, the issue with the height?
Yeah, you, it literally would be very detrimental to the construction of any garage eighteen foot wide to try and keep a twelve-foot. Pitch on it, because you lay, basically have, end up with a twenty-foot wide building. Ten foot is half the distance, and even at a two-twelve. You're gonna go up twenty inches from a ten-foot tall basic structure, so you're already sitting at almost twelve feet. For a two-twelve roof, which is basically flat. For our snow load. In this, this part of the world, you, you should have a four to five twelve pitch minimum. And most of the houses and structures in this village are probably closer to an eight. Um, which means eight rise over twelve inches of run. Um, in a house in question, her house is a ten-twelve pitch. So to kind of reflect, or to be able to reflect the style of the house in the garage. It would be literally impossible to build an eighteen-foot-wide building at twelve-foot tall. It said you would end up with a flat roof and that wouldn't meet, meet the character of anything in this village.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Um, is there any other questions from other members of the board?
I think it's fairly, uh, clear-cut.
Yeah, so what I thought as well, I want to give people a chance to comment. If anyone wants to ask questions or have any additional comments. Uh, please raise your hand. Okay, uh, Marina, then I haven't heard anything, and, uh. Then, uh, so I think we should just go ahead and bring up the, the draft resolution for the area variance for this, and then go through the five criteria. And we can discuss them.
Okay, just a sec.
That one's a site plan.
Um, and the most recent one you sent, I see. Forty-five Shown Place Area Variance, forty-five Shame Place Area Variance, seventy-two State Streets Site Plan.
Missing an area variance?
Yeah, I think so, let me.
There's a typo on that one page right there.
I see the address is a typo.
So would you like me to pull up the blank template or, um, or are you able to send?
Send it to you.
Yeah, okay. Marina, are you looking at the email he sent at five forty?
Yes.
Cause I, I've got all four of them. Maybe if you scroll down.
Hold on. Oh, that's weird. I said download the zip file. Okay, hold on.
I only got three documents in my zip file.
Yeah.
That's all the zip included.
Uh, there's issues emailing documents for some reason sometimes. I don't know why, but the email system likes to eat them.
The area variance, not the site plan, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I can't get to that one. That one, uh. Doesn't download for me.
Okay. I am going to resend it to you.
And that's weird, because they're all doc X, so I'm not sure why.
I've seen plenty of documents either show up blank or get deleted. Uh, I don't know, maybe, um.
Maybe we need a new email system.
Yeah, I think that might help.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
All right, Marina, I did send it to you.
All righty. That's me getting it.
So it sounds like it was.
And now it's perfectly fine. That is so interesting. Okay, um, stop and reshare. This one. These don't be blank. And blank. Huh, wow, that's so weird.
That's fair. Hey, Justin, while we're, uh, trying to pull up that file, um, Art Pierce had, uh, asked if he could go on record to speak, uh, on behalf of Seventy Street Street.
Um, yeah, I guess that would make sense. We can open the public hearing. Um, I think we had not done that yet. And, uh, that would make sense. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Susan Loda, aye.
Joanne, Shannon, aye.
Okay, uh, motion carries. And I will, uh, promote, who is it? Uh, Art Pierce to speak.
Hey, Justin, just, I, I know we're having issues emailing that Word doc. Um, in Zoom before, I dragged the document into the chat, and I think you can send it to an individual that way.
Sorry, Art, I had to mute you. You had a lot of feedback there.
Marina, I resent it as a zip document. Maybe it'll like it better that way.
Okay, I'll give that a shot.
We had the same problem last meeting.
And I did make you all co-hosts, so, um, if any of you are getting it okay and are willing to share it. Um, that is possible.
May I ask a question while we're pulling up the doc? The, um. The application that was included in the packet isn't signed. Would it be possible for the applicant to, um, stop by? The, I don't know, Village Hall's open yet, you know, either stop by or submit a signed application.
This is Shannon Hookway. I think we did, Steve and I connected and signed it. Maybe it was after it was sent. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, there is a signed version. I don't know why it didn't get into the packet, but there was a signed version of it.
Okay, are, are we able to hear from Art Pierce?
I'm gonna unmute him now and see if that feedback loop happens again. Oh wait, I can't unmute him, but I could mute him. Weird. Could somebody unmute him? Please.
Uh, you can only ask him to unmute himself, I guess. Okay, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh. Yes, this is, uh, Art Pierce of Seventy State Street. And once again, uh, as in the last meeting, I'd like to support the application. And I think all the variants, the requests are appropriate, especially with consideration with all the. Technical points raised by the building inspector. In addition to the fact that Shannon is gonna go a long way to make sure that. The design is in. Uh, concert with all the historical features of, of her house and, and certainly. Uh, in line with the histor. Historic preservation district.
Okay, are there any other comments from the public? I'm not sure if I lost audio, but I'm hearing nothing.
Can you hear it? Crickets.
Crickets, okay. Um, well, if we have no, Marina, did we receive any written comments?
I did not see any.
Okay.
I think everybody called at the first meeting.
Yes, I, we were, we had heard a lot of comments from various people at the first meeting. And, uh, we had several neighbors comment at the time, and I recall they were pretty supportive of this. Uh, the only potential issue was brought up was, um, not related to the variance, but it was, um. Working out landscaping issues when constructing close to the property line.
Mm-hmm, and if Art is still on, we did, we've, we've discussed that further, and we've had a tree expert and. Um, I think we're in alignment with any, any issues around roots and so forth.
Yeah, no, I had forwarded a prior copy of a letter we had from a landscape architect that commented on this for a project on Sutherland Street. And I forwarded that to the office staff and if, uh, asking to forward that along to anyone interested. I don't know if you got a copy of that. But I found that was interesting reading, and that was, uh, different circumstances, but similar subject matter.
Sure, I would appreciate totally, uh, adding to that. Information to how we work with that.
So, okay, I didn't know if you received it or not.
If I did, I apologize. I don't recall, um. But if somebody has that and wants to re-forward it. That would be great.
Shannon, I understand that you and Art have a, you, you guys have agreed on a plan now to protect the tree, right?
Yes, yes, and, and actually, the location is a little different than I think Art originally, um. Had, had thought, so, um, I think we're in agreement. I, I'm, you know, I'm a tree lover, so I'm. I'm going to take it all into consideration and, um, well, we're gonna do our due diligence, and it's actually in a safer, better position than I think we anticipated.
Yeah, well, well, we can get back into that, back with the, um, site plan. Um, I don't think that's relevant to the variance. Wherever they construct a garage on the property, I think it's pretty obvious it should be more than twelve feet tall, so that's what's before us.
Gotcha.
Um, so we closed the public hearing, I believe. Is that correct?
That's right.
And Steve, we, um, we have heard from, did we need to hear from county planning on this? I can't remember.
No, this was not a county planning issue.
Oh, that's correct. This is an accessory structure, accessory residential structure, which is exempt from review.
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, well, with that said, then, let's go ahead and go through this. Um, first of all, the address needs to be corrected though, seventy-two state, not seventy-five state. And, um, I believe the height. Of the garage was nineteen feet. Is that correct, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, um, so they can keep on scrolling, Marina. Um, so we talked about county planning. We already found this to be a type-two action and seeker, and it's not subject to waterfront consistency review. Um, so let's scroll down to the next page, Marina, we get to our five criteria we have to consider. All right, does anyone want to jump off with the first one? I think we've heard plenty of comments on that. Anyone on the board want to start this off?
Sure. Um, so I believe, uh, it will not create an undesirable change. I think it will enhance, uh, the properties on State Street. And, you know, kind of further, um, uh, kind of strengthen the identity of, of garages that, you know, have a, a barn-like look. And she cited many, many other examples in, in the village, so I think this will create a desirable change.
Thank you.
I agree.
I second that. Or third.
Okay, I would agree with that. We heard testimony from the building inspector. Uh, well, I guess maybe the architect about how this is more compatible. With. Uh, the existing house and with other houses in the village.
Mm-hmm.
Then if the way, it would be, uh, a bigger problem if they tried to construct it twelve feet.
Right.
Okay, uh, the next one, anyone want to take a, uh, jump on this?
I would, uh, just say, the applicant can. Uh, this is a silly question in this case, because sure, you can build a garage potentially somewhere else, but. It makes very little sense, so I would say cannot.
I, I think we heard from Steve, right? Given the, given the width of the garage and the pitch, it, there, there's no other feasible way to do this, right?
Right.
But for the variance, the, the applicant needs a variance in order to build, uh, detached garage with a second floor, given the width of it and the pitch.
Yeah. Yeah, we heard from the building inspector that snow loads need to be considered, and the shallow roof is. Makes that challenging or difficult, and we also heard. That it would be less compatible if shorter. With the, with the house, because the house has steep roofs, and a constructed garage with a shallow roof, and when the house has a steep roof. Would be, uh. Undesirable and would not look like it fits on the property.
Right.
Okay, we, we can tweak some of this language a little bit after the fact. I think we captured our thoughts and our statements here. We can catch up on the writing later. So the next one, as to whether it's substantial. And what they were requesting. A height of nineteen feet when twelve feet is requested. Um, Mindy, I think, uh, just from a number standpoint, does that normally meet the criteria for being substantial? You're muted, Mindy.
I mean, the, the seven feet itself. Is not usually substantial, but it's more than fifty percent of the requirement.
So the, so the requested relief is, um. More than fifty percent of the code requirement, and I'm not sure what the legal threshold is that comes into play, but it sounds like. It's much lower than fifty percent typically. But again, we don't have to find all five of these criteria are met. We can still grant an area variance.
Correct, it's, it's a balancing test, and my recollection from the last time that we looked, we considered this application was that the structure would not be visible. From the.
It is visible.
It is visible.
But.
It was a different application.
Oh, sorry.
That was the, that was the one with the sewer pipe.
Right.
Rights.
Um, right, but we could say that, uh, you know, uh, architectural compatibility. Um, almost requires a steeper pitch.
To match the house.
Yeah, right.
Yep. But I think in the end, like Justin said, right, we don't need to hit all.
Right.
Five, five.
Well, we got the, uh, so I would say it is substantial, but it's justified.
Right.
I, I agree with that. It's greater than fifty percent. It's greater than fifty percent, but justified given the adjoining structure is, has a steep pitch and for reasons stated above, right?
Yeah, and again, we can touch up the wording on this after the fact here. So for D here, whether it will or will not have an effect. So for D here, whether it will or will not have an effect on the environment, we usually just use the same findings we have in A. Does anyone see a reason not to?
No.
Yeah.
So that would be community character and environmental conditions are kind of similar.
Consistency, congruency, whatever we want to say. It's all looks good.
So for C Marina, I think it is substantial, and for D, it will not. And usually for E, the hardship or the desire for a garage is definitely self-created. So we usually say the difficulty is self-created, but this alone does not preclude granting on area variance.
I love that word.
What is this a faulty?
I know, it's a great new, great new word.
It's short for this difficulty. Conjugation.
And it sounds like F, we've already talked about this, that a lower variance actually is worse because it makes it less compatible with the architectural style of the house and less compatible with other barn-like garages in the village.
Right.
So I would say it is the minimum necessary. As far as physical characteristics, I don't see very much other than the the architecture of the barn is meant to be compatible with the house.
Including a true pitch.
Okay, I think that's fine. Does anyone else have anything to add? I think this is seems reasonable to me.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yep, so I think you can delete any other findings, Marina, but we can do that after the fact.
Go make some eggs afterwards. We gotta eat something.
All right, next page. I guess our question is, did we want to? I don't see a need to put any conditions of approval on this. The Architectural Review Board can do what they want with this, but I still see the need to grant a height variance regardless of what they do. But are there any other opinions?
Agreed.
Agree.
So I don't see the need to to put a condition for HPPB approval on the variance request. Okay. So we will have no conditions then if all are in agreement to that. And then I, if we are good, then I would suggest we vote to approve this. Is there any other comments from the board before we vote?
I have none. We need some new names in there, Marina.
Wow.
How did that happen? I thought I updated all that. Yeah, those are really off. You can see I must I'm grabbing templates, but I can't believe it's been that long since I updated this template. I thought I updated it earlier. I may have grabbed the wrong one. But fortunately, the state law for the criteria hasn't changed in decades. Is that right, Mindy? Okay. All right, then I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the 72 State Street area variance for the reasons discussed.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Dave Marshall, aye.
Joanna Shannon, aye.
God, aye.
Susan Loda, aye.
Justin Vleter, aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, you are one step closer here. So thank you for your patience working with us. I think it sounded like everyone completely agreed that we have issues with the code here for the garage height. And the proposal was fine. It's just our code for garage heights didn't make sense. So we're hoping to address that in a future code update. But that is all settled for 72 State Street. I'm sure we'll encounter it again, or we could encounter it again in the near future. But for now, that's off the table. So let's go to the site plans for 72 State. I believe we closed a public hearing. Does anyone recall if we closed the public hearing for this?
Well.
Okay, well, I can ask Marina, first of all, have you received any new comments from the public since we last discussed this?
I have not. Okay, Art Piers does have his hand up again.
Just Marina, we need to be reminded that comments from the public need to be germane to the application.
Okay. Does the board wish to, it looks like Shannon and Art would like to speak again?
Yeah, by all means, let's start with the applicant, Shannon. By all means, if you have something to discuss, I think we can discuss a tree situation slightly, but go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, I sort of got kicked off right as you were approving, so I was trying to say thank you, and then you all froze. So appreciate your time and efforts towards all of this. And I am now, you you just all froze, and I had to re rejump back in, so I wanted to let you know I was still there. But I do appreciate all the time and efforts that went into the past couple of weeks or months here.
Okay, well, we're trying to do what we can to move this along and follow all of our code requirements. We we try to be pretty thorough and diligent and dot our eyes and cross all of our teeth, because that keeps us out of trouble. We do this with everybody, no matter how small the applications are.
Sure, no, I appreciate it. It's been a great education and
Yeah, our goal is to treat everybody the same. But anyway, now we also had Art Piers has his hand up and wanted to speak.
My favorite neighbor.
Art, I believe you're muted. Okay, I guess he lowered his hand. Maybe he's okay. Art, if you want to speak, by all means, you can. We'll give you one last chance here. Okay, I'll make one, we haven't heard from Art, I'll make one comment on the tree situation. Just to summarize for everybody, there was a little bit of concern about the tree. They're proposing to build a garage three feet from the property line. And anytime you bring in heavy equipment, it can crush roots on trees. And if you dig, you can disturb the root system. So construction around trees is a concern when you're close to the property line, as we don't want to accidentally kill a neighbor's tree. So I was commenting that we had some comments from our landscape architect on a prior project. And I'll just I'll give a brief summary of that, since everyone's here. It sounds like the applicant didn't receive them. But one rule is done was to not disturb more than 25% of the tree's root system. Whoever called about that. And then there was something in there about the distance from the tree you shouldn't disturb. I think it was somewhere around six feet. They'll have to pull it up in the letter, so their recommendation is to build a temporary plastic fence around the tree at that perimeter. And to keep construction equipment out of there, so you don't crush the roots or dig up the roots. But then I also recall that depending on the tree species determines what to do. I think for that project, we had two trees, we had a pine, and we had a Norway maple. And I believe our landscape architect said Norway maples are nearly indestructible, and you don't have to worry about them. I don't know what species this one is.
I can speak to that a little bit. This is Shannon. Number one, the tree, the equipment will not even affect the tree or the tree roots, that they're they are sort of between two paved driveways. We will certainly, you know, protect them if anything does come near them, but they they are not exposed by grass or dirt. They're really sort of surrounded by pavement as it is. It is, I believe, a maple. And I've had one tree expert come out and and speak to it as well. We will definitely be five to six feet from that that tree. And do due diligence around any roots that we find. As far as there's one footer that will be in question.
Okay, Susan.
So I took another look at that memo from Mary Scipione. And at the end of it, she lists some precautionary steps that that one could take to protect a tree. So I think if we, you know, just make sure that Shannon gets a look at that. It sounds like she's already, you know, gone to some length to protect the tree. But I thought this memo was was really great about, you know, fertilizing, mulching, protective fencing, you know, all measures that could, you know, protect this wonderful maple tree.
Okay, that sounds good. So hopefully we'll get a copy too. Shannon, I think my takeaway from our last discussion about this is if the applicant and their neighbor are resolving this, and they sound like they're amicably resolving this, I don't see the need for this board to get involved with a debate over a tree. So at least that's my thought. So I would like to move on and hopefully get her this letter and let them resolve the issue.
Right.
Yeah.
There any other comments from anybody? I guess I had one question for Shannon and or the building inspector in where the garage is going to be located. There is some discussion that it could be three feet or five feet from the property line. And last we discussed this, the request was to have some flexibility. And we've done that in the past. And they want a little flexibility, so if it was needed to move it a couple of feet to resolve the tree situation, they would have that flexibility. I was just wondering as if there is any clarity as to whether that flexibility is still needed or if a decision has been made as to exactly where it needs to be located.
So this is Shannon. I can I can speak to that. I, again, going back to the, you know, the possible root system that might be down there. I think originally we had three feet. And we sort of made that sort of variable to five, depending on what we find. And, you know, ideally, I would, you know, it somewhere between three and five would be ideal as far as I aesthetic and efficiency for the garage positioning. But I think it to me that it sort of depends what we find when we, you know, we see the root system. Whatever is best for the the tree in question, if it's even in question, we will know once we start digging. So if there, you know, we sort of left that a variable in in that regard.
Okay. And does anyone else have any questions, comments? I think we discussed this pretty thoroughly before, so I would like, if there's no other comments, let's just go in and take a look at the resolution and discuss some of our findings.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you for the reminder for that. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Dave Marshall, aye.
Joanna Shannon, aye.
Susan Loda, aye.
Justin Vleter, aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then Marina, can you go ahead and open this up?
Sure, just a sec.
Yeah, we gotta fix the garage. Okay. So the first criteria here was whether it complies with the comprehensive plan and waterfront criteria. Now, I can read, kind of summarize what we had discussed. This is pretty similar to some the last application that we had for garage at the last meeting. So I believe before we had just found this was not applicable, as this is a garage in a residential district. And we also said this was subject to review by the Historic Preservation Board, which will ensure that the application complies with our preservation code requirements. There anyone want to comment on that, any other board members?
Sounds good.
Agreed.
All right, so for the next one on traffic and circulation, Steve, can we ask your official opinion as to whether there is any problems with vehicular traffic and circulation here?
I mean, it won't be changed, right?
I don't believe they're changing the driveway at all. They're doing it in garage.
Everything will remain the same.
So then we can just say that's going to be the same.
Right.
Okay.
Same same thing, no changes. There's no changes to the driveway.
Okay, and the two neighboring properties are both residential. And then the property behind it is commercial. That's 50 State Street. I believe that's right behind there.
It's it's actually the railroad bed. There there's nothing, you know, it I think it's It's, it's actually the railroad bed. There, there's nothing, you know, it, I think it's owned by our genie, but we've never seen them exist there.
Yeah, well, regardless of who is there, whether it's, I don't think your garage is going to bother any of them.
Correct.
Um, so you, you are not bordering on the Powers Farm, are you? There's a little bit of a gap there.
There's a gap, yeah. There's, there's a parcel, um, my, you know, there's my property, a little parcel that uh our genie owns, uh, the old railroad bed trail, and then there's Powers.
Okay, so I guess the property behind it is the RGNE right of way then.
I, I guess. They've never done anything with it. I'm the only one who cleans it up.
Okay, um, all right, let's go on to the next one, number six. Um, again, this is a residential property, so parking, loading and access isn't relevant for this.
No, N A.
Okay, so six we found not applicable. Number seven, uh landscaping and screening. Um, I believe the neighbors are resolving landscaping.
Justin, may I jump in here, please?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, there were a couple of uh public comments that were made by Mr. Pyers when uh, and through the chat box during the public comment period and they relate to this issue. So I would ask Marina to um read those comments into the record, please.
Yeah, I, I didn't even see those comments.
Uh, he's making a lot of, I can't really um reply in here and also take notes and, and do this. So I apologize if there's some delay. Um, he stated just generally that he was in support of the application and that he would handle the tree issue with Miss Hookway and didn't see um, a reason for the board to be involved with it. Um, that's summing it up, I believe. Um, okay.
Thank you.
Um, so neighbors are resolving landscaping issues and the site is already landscaping, landscaped. Okay, and signage, I think is not applicable for residential property. Uh, we already heard some commentary from the applicant and Steve on lighting. Uh, that the lighting is code compliant. Uh, we also heard prior commentary from Steve on drainage. I believe the summary was that the drainage, the backyard is pitched away from the garage.
Drainage will, will go northeast away from any neighbors.
Okay, yeah, so the uh gutters I believe just attached to splash blocks, but with the slope of the land, that's not going to cause any drainage to run off onto the neighbors' properties. That's what I recall hearing.
Correct.
And um, as far as utilities go, I, I recall hearing from Steve that he's going to review any new utilities as part of the building permit. And all of the utilities are going to be underground and wouldn't be of any concern. They would have no visual impact. So I think that would apply to, I don't know if they're doing any water, but I think we could say adequacy of utilities in general. Um, so the electric um drainage, all of that is to be uh between the house and the garage is underground and will be reviewed as part of the building permit. And um, that's not applicable. And snow review plans, um, sounds like that's not applicable. Whatever they do now is what they'll do in the future. Okay, Steve, are you around to uh give any final comments on whether you have any other concerns? And uh, what the fire marshal stance is on this?
I don't have any concerns with the application or the uh the variance that you already approved.
Okay, so no, no concerns from the fire marshal and no concerns regarding uh public health and safety.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, so then the next step here would be to uh, for the board to discuss any conditions of approval and waiving application requirements. I would certainly agree to waive application requirements. Um, does any, uh, is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the two conditions of approval are our standard ones. I can't think of anything else to add for a condition of approval. Uh, I didn't see any significant concerns with this. Okay, I'm hearing crickets. Uh, if that's the case, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the site plans for seventy-two State Street.
I'll second Dave Marshall.
Okay, member Katura?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And chairperson Valistra?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that one is done.
Your typo weight that I'd like, sorry, quick typo, um, this one is a the rest, oh, never mind. I was thinking of the other one. I'll mute myself and stop talking.
Um, I'm wondering if the seeker citations might differ from both of them. One was eleven and one was twelve.
Right, um, it was, they should both be twelve.
So it's a residential accessory structure.
Correct.
Six seventeen point five C dot twelve?
Yes.
Okay, I'll fix that now.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Thank you, Mindy. Okay, um, well, Shannon, you are all set from us. And so let's go to our, so congratulations and let's go on to our next agenda item.
Right, thank you all. Very much appreciate everything.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's like you have a great project. Uh, so let's go ahead and move on to forty-five Shane Place. And it looks like we have the applicant here, um, Mary Ann. And um, let's go ahead, Mary Ann, I could, um, did you hear some of the explanation I gave of the variance process earlier?
I did not.
Okay. Um, so I could explain that a little bit then, just to make sure you're aware of it. Uh, state law gives us five criteria we have to consider for an area variance. Um, the ultimate test before us is we are uh supposed to look at the application and evaluate the benefit to you and weigh that against the impact on the community. And use that as the basis of our decision, uh factoring in the five criteria. Um, we just went through the five criteria a few minutes ago with the last application. Uh, but looking at community character is one of the key ones. Looking at the size of the variance is another one. And we had a bit of a discussion earlier um, in our workshop uh about some aspects of this. But before we get into any of that, um, I'd just like to welcome you here. And I'd like to uh allow you to go ahead and introduce your project a little bit so that we can listen from your point of view, what you're trying to do and uh why this works well for you. Uh, so uh, with um with that, uh, let's go ahead and introduce your project.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, I'm Mary Ann Morpho. I've been working on Neutral Ground Coffee House since April. As you all can imagine, I've ran into some supply chain issues and that sort of thing, but my goal right now is to be open by November first. Uh, the support from the dog walkers and bikers and people walking by has been tremendous. I've already started booking some events for the venue side. Um, it's split half and half where there's coffee, ice cream, breakfast and lunch on the right side of the building, if you're looking at it from the canal. And on the left side, a thousand square feet is dedicated to a private event space that you can rent out for um parties up to fifty. And so I, I know s- some of you folks have stopped in to see it. It really is beautiful and the, the um, support from the community and the excitement is just sometimes really overwhelming. It's great. Um, I fully believe in quality signage. I think if you see Tony Snow is on here somewhere from GUP Signs, he's the one that helped me come up with my plan for um the signage that I'm proposing. And I did a lot of research on the type of signage that was used back at like the turn of the century in this style building and submitted some of those um, as examples of what I'm, I'm trying to create here. But my goal is to do something that's fits the style of the building, which I look at as sort of a general store or a train depot. And also address some of the challenges that I have with having such a low roof line, a low roof porch line, really. Um, and also um you know, just such a large roof and everything like that, so um, I, I had Tony help me come up with this design that I'm proposing and I, I think it suits the style of the building. And I'm hoping you guys agree, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you all have.
Good, thank you for the introduction. Um, we had a, a bit of a conversation about some aspects of this in our workshop before the meeting. We'd like to repeat those in the meeting, uh, if there's anything pertinent. So I just want to give a, a little bit of a summary. We heard that one from the building inspector about challenges to mounting signs on the building. And he clarified some of the code restrictions that we're working with. So one code restriction is a sign cannot be mounted on a roof. It has to be mounted, mounted on the front facade of the building. And another restriction is you can only have one sign on a facade of the building. And uh, you have six proposed at this point in time, one mounted on the roof and five small signs below the eaves on the front of the building. Um, so those are the code restrictions we are working with. And uh, the building inspector also shared with us some comments about the building and why it's difficult to mount signs on this building. So he stated that window m- signs are sometimes allowed, but all your windows have lights in them. I believe he stated that in your application as well, so they're not practical for hanging signs. Uh, you have a porch and there's no space above the door or windows that would be visible to hang a sign. And distances between windows and windows and the door are all pretty small. So there's really no place on the front of the building to mount a sign other than the roof or hanging it from uh the eaves of the porch. Uh, so that was one of the discussions we had earlier. Um, and then uh, something was mentioned about a discussion you may have had with an H P B member about possible alternates. Um, so let me ask the applicant, did, did you have any thoughts about that or anything to report to us?
I really believe in, I, I listen, I submitted my first choice. I mean, I, I think the signage is beautiful. It's, it's um made out of wood and gold leaf and I really think it suits the front of the building. I just need to get some sort of approval. So I do have alternatives, but I'm uh, like I don't want to share those unless I have to. If I, if I get declined with what I'm requesting here, um, I'll be disappointed, quite honestly, and my alternatives that I worked with, with Tony Snow from GUP Signs are um, less impactful. And I, it's using a version of my logo that I'm a horizontal version of my logo that I really don't want to use because I'm very um, true to brand. My whole background is in marketing and advertising. And I really um, want to use this logo that's on this proposal is, is the logo that I'll be using on everything. And so I do have alternatives, but I'm, I'm I'm hopeful that this proposal that I submitted, you guys will see the historical value and, you know, the quality of the signage and how it suits and addresses the, the front of this building.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, appreciate the clarification there. Um, maybe we can have the building inspector. Uh, is he still present? Um, Steve, can you talk to us about any challenges on the roof mounted sign? Are there any technical reasons preventing this uh from being reasonable or is there any with that damaged building in any way?
No, I mean, you, if you actually look down in, in Shane Place or down at fifty State Street, there are several of the businesses down below that actually have some, because there are two level buildings um, with like porches and things. There are a few buildings down there that have roof mounted signs. As long as a uh, it's like any, anything else, it would be round, mounted to a roof. If it is done professionally, you have no fear of leakage. That, that's the big difference. And I, and if you have a professional sign company, it's going to mount a roof, mounted sign. They are going to be capable of making sure that it doesn't cause any structural damage.
Okay, and it's also noted, this is over a porch. So if there's a leak, the leak would be into a porch. It wouldn't be into a building.
Correct. The, the way the, their proposal of where she's got the sign mounted would only be in the soffit area of the front porch, not in the main building.
And if a sign was to be removed in the future, Steve, do you think that would be um, pretty minimal um impacts? I would imagine you at what at, at most need to replace a few roof tiles.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've, I've removed, I mean, any comparable carpenter can remove a, a sign or a, uh you know, a dish for, you know, cable or whatever, things like that, make sure the roof doesn't leak.
Okay, but again, if it was removed in the future, there would be no evidence remaining. That would be easily patched up, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, any other board members want to start off with any comments or questions?
This is uh Dave Marshall. I just have a couple of questions. Um, so this is a multi-commercial building. And they have, of course, in, with normal windows, they could put a bunch of signage essentially in the windows. In this case, it doesn't make sense. One question I have is, could one grant multiple hanging signs like have been proposed here, um, that I think seem congruent um, with the surrounding area and the sort of the structure and um but could one grant that and at the same time have it be on the condition that no window signage would be placed in the future? So essentially give one, take one. So right now they have the ability to put a bunch of signage in the window. What if one were to say, we'll grant you the five hangings? What if one were to say, we'll grant you the five hangings, but no longer could you put anything in the window, can you do that?
Not really, you can't find future boards.
I think we, I think we may have done something like that as a condition of approval. Yeah. And I'm thinking of a Bank of America application, we allowed them to put another sign on the front of the building. But I think it may as a condition of approval, they'll be dealt window mounted signs.
But in that case, didn't they apply for window mounted, mounted signs?
No, they had the same problem, they had lights in the windows. And they wanted to have an extra sign on the front. And because they couldn't use window mounted signs, so they had a challenge with visibility. I, I mean, I can pull it up, but if you think that it doesn't make sense to make that as a condition of approval, Mindy. Then that's, then so be it.
Steve has his hand up.
I was gonna say, the, the physical makeup of those windows on the building make it virtually impossible to do any window mounted signage. Just because they, they are, they are a six over six or an eight over eight on the windows, so. And they're external mounting, so you couldn't put a sign in the window and have it be usable.
That's true now, but that doesn't necessarily true, hold true forever.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's a technically word because the HPB would never, never approve you taking windows that didn't, that had. Divided lights and replace them with undivided light windows, that's not going to ever happen in historic history.
But, but I don't think we, we don't need to prove a negative because if they wanted to put a, another sign up in the window. They'd have to come here and seek a variance and they'd likely get a no answer, right? Five signs above the door and a sign on this, a sign on the top of the roof.
You don't need a variance for the windows.
Well, you, you would need a, you'd need a variance due to the amount of signage that's already on the building, I would believe.
I don't believe so under.
Oh yeah, technically are true because you could use twenty percent of a, of a door or window glass.
Bingo, so you could, you could potentially. Put signage, not consistent, but in the different panes of the window, you could cover twenty percent of it right now. Right, so what I'm suggesting is a condition of approval. To have these hanging signs be approved conditional on the windows. Not being used as signage.
I, I get it.
So then you're not doubling down, because what I would hate to see is, I mean, we have a particular tenant now, but that isn't always true. So in thinking ahead, these, these hanging signs are there, we grant approval. They don't have to say lunch, supper, breakfast, coffee or anything else, right, they could say whatever the new business is. So down the road, whatever that turns into, I wouldn't also want all the signage in the windows. So if one were to say, this looks nice, I think it frankly does, but. Remove as a condition of approval, the ability to use the windows, so if a subsequent business wants to use the windows instead, the hanging signs are then removed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that because. That's something that would be otherwise be permissible, permissible as of right.
Okay. So in thinking along those lines, I personally look at the, the photo that was provided. I think it looks nice, I think from a planning board perspective, it's in the spirit of the community. I think it benefits the applicant more than it does detriment the community. And I recognize the building is very different. It doesn't have a space for a sign above a door. The big overhang does prevent for significant signage to the passersby and people on the road. And I think there is some benefit to both the applicant and the community. To know what tenant is there and to try to support them. And I think the sign looks good personally, so to, to me, I sort of think of this as it's. Something that maybe we pass with approval and move it on to the HPB. And if they don't like it, they don't like it, but I think on our end, first for me, I think it looks nice.
Anyone else have comments from the board?
I, I agree with Dave. I, I don't take issue with the roof mounted sign, I think the building is unique. There's not much the applicant can do. And so I, I'm not sure where else they'd hang a sign frankly. That would actually put their full logo and signage that you could see from the sidewalk. And I think with the, you know, with Dave's suggestion that, you know, the windows aren't papered up with. You know, more signage. That works for me and frankly, it, it looks good, I think the applicant mentioned kind of like the depot vibe and I, 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 I see it. It looks good, it looks nice, it kind of fits the, fits the area and it's a, you know, commercial area, right? This isn't, I don't think this is similar to guaranteed rate, which was more of a residential house, right, this is, this is different. And frankly, you know, we don't need any more empty buildings down there.
I, I would also like to add that the sign of the one on the roof mount. If it comes to the fact that the HPV thinks something that's a little. Less vertical, a little more horizontal is more appropriate, I think. And, and we can think on that too, is, is this height inappropriate for the size and the scale of the building? And in looking at it in the drawing, I don't think so. So if in the end, there's a design change that the HPV might require, then it comes back to us. And maybe we grant a different. Variance for the size of the roof mounted sign, but the roof mounted sign by itself, I don't have a problem with.
Let's ask you for some clarification on that, Steve, I do, this, I believe you stated earlier, the size of this sign. The primary sign is compliant with code, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then I, I think one of the key things for us is the aesthetic. Value that we see with this and what do we think about that? And then the other thing is the quantity of signs, I've heard some discussion of it. And it looks like the applicant's done a good job with their sign designer to make this work with the architecture of the building and they had the theme here. But I'm just thinking back to prior applications, when we took a look at Starbucks. Way back when they wanted extra signs on the front and we thought at that point that it might be visual clutter and it might be too many. And. So I just wanna, it seems like people are comfortable with this. So I just wanted to see if there's anyone has any comments on the quantity of the signs that seem reasonable to them. Would it be better if there is three signs in the front instead of five or is it really not much difference in impact? I just want to gauge opinions here.
I like the symmetrical nature, right, there's a small sign under each, under each entryway, I think it looks good. And to Starbucks, I, I, you know, to Starbucks, you mentioned those black kind of. I don't know what you call them, awnings that come out, right, that you want, that they wanted their name on, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and if I understand correct, you know, above, above that, there's a Starbucks logo. And it actually says Starbucks spelled out and you, you put on the awning Starbucks again, I could see how you'd be repeating the same saying over and over again. I, I think this is a little different, right? The business has their, their logo, right, Neutral Ground Coffee House. And then those little signs are really kind of indicating, right, events based breakfast, lunch, dinner or ice cream, sorry. Which we go for, but I, I. I, I think it's different, at least in my view.
I have a question. Is there a difference between a sign that identifies the business? And a sign that is functions as a menu? Or is a sign a sign?
I guess that brings up an interesting question, so if a future owner went in there. And let's, you know, whatever they wanted to call it, but called Bob's Coffee Shop. And they wanted six signs on the front that said Bob's Coffee Shop. Based on what we looked at before, we found that would be a little bit of clutter. You know, so it sounds like. There's a little bit of a difference between repeated signs with the same things versus different signs. And I'm hearing a lot of tolerance for what they're trying to do here with the different language on these hanging signs. But just thinking about this from what happens in the future, if we grant this. It would be essentially a permanent approval for additional signs on the building.
So this is where I think some wording, particular to this location and what's getting put in place, or you know, the business is coming forward. I think that these all signs should be supplemental to the primary signage on the roof line of the building. Consistent with, oh, go ahead, Susan, so hi.
What do you mean by supplemental?
Supplemental or. Probably a better word for it, but. Not indicative of the brand, but rather indicative like you had mentioned of the menu, so the question might be, could we add some verbiage to it that suggests? The commercial offering and the, the requirement that they all be different, right? So that sometime down the road, they don't know, don't all say the same thing. And maybe such that they're all connected to the primary tenant located on the first floor, right?
That can't dictate speech.
Yeah, no, you can, you, you, you can't say what the signs are going to say, you can say that the content of the sign will be different.
Yes.
Can't say that some can deal with the name of the business and others can deal with the menu, you can't do that.
Can't do that.
No.
But you, you said you can dictate that they're different.
Yeah, you can say that the words will be different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You could say that they would have to be different and complimentary to the main sign.
Can't say that.
No.
You can't say anything about the, 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 the content of the speech, you can just say that the speech has to be different.
Okay.
But I, 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 I see, I see everybody, you know, Susan, I, I, I see your issue, you know, you know, you brought the signs a sign, right? I think here we, we have to figure something out because it. I, I can't see allowing a hanging, if we allow, if we allow the roof sign. And only one or two smaller signs underneath roof line, I don't think it would look appropriate. To me, it wouldn't look symmetric, it would just look awkward and stick out like a sore thumb.
Wonder if, so neutral ground was a monument sign.
Where would it go?
Well, that's Susan.
A monument sign.
Yeah. I like the roof in this instance because it is such a unique and different property. Maybe there's something the HPV will have to say about. Location or width and height. But. I don't know, I, I tend to like the roof better than a monument sign, I, I hear.
Steve, what other building has a, has a roof sign on Shane Place?
Look, if you go straight down the driveway, on the right side of her building, straight back behind here. There are two roof mounted signs. It's not the Hobby House, it's the one to the left, there's a tailor, I believe is one of them. And then the other one is.
Notion?
I think it might be Notion, yeah, who, they just can't, we had seen them, I don't know, three months ago or four months ago. They are roof mounted also.
So I think they're, I don't think they're actually, I think they project from the face.
Right.
It's, it's perpendicular to the front fascia, it's not on top of the roof, I think the tailoring sign and next to it, there's like a.
No, the frame, John, the frames, the, the actual physical mounting of those signs are on the porch roof.
I, I, I get that the beams coming back are on the roof, I'm saying the actual sign itself is plastered to the front fascia.
No, they're both mounted, they're both mounted to, one's mounted to a wood frame and one's mounted to a metal frame.
You can look at them on Google Maps, it's, it's clear as day, it's, it's on the front, it's on the front of the building. Even, and the connecting rods in the back are on the top of the roof. It's on Google Maps right now, you can zoom in and see.
Well, but, but still technically a roof mounted sign.
Sure, there's a bracket connected to the roof.
Well, it would be the same thing this thing, they're not physically mounting the signs of the roof. They're putting bracketing on the roof and then mounting a sign to the face of the bracketing. So you could, you could mount it right to the front edge and be the same exact as what's below. Or you push it back a foot to make it look a little better aesthetically.
Sure.
I think we're gonna make it look good.
So, yeah, Susan, your question's a good one though, and the answer is, I, outside of the comments of the gentleman here, I, I really don't know. But I also don't know many buildings in the village that don't have spacing above the door, that have an extended porch. And on in overhead. That have this sort of flat sloping roof, it is a unique, I think architecturally different building. That, you know, as, as far as thinking about what type of signage might be best suited. My preference would probably be a roof over a. A. You know, freestanding sign in the front like a monument sign. And, and maybe it's just the unique nature of the building and how it looks in relation to the design drawings here, but.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that's unique about this building, if you look at it, it's got a center walk up. So monument sign would be offset on one side or the other too versus. You know, aesthetically in the center to be the most pleasing.
Yeah.
I, I think if you look, if you look at the building from the front on Google Maps. The only place to put the sign is where the current, like real or leasing sign is, which is off to the left. Right, it, you know, some, and I just, that's, you know. I think any business wants their sign on the front of their building, not.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm very design oriented, so when I look at it, I think what she's done in designing came up with is very. Applicable to the spacing on the front of the building to make it look aesthetically correct for the building.
It, it sounds like we're split here. I.
That's okay.
Yeah, it. And, and it, the issue. Is everybody seem okay with the small signs that are hanging underneath? For now.
I don't have a problem with the small signs underneath, I heard the comments earlier, I think there is agreement that the symmetry makes sense. And reducing them wouldn't, the number of signs wouldn't really reduce the impact of this.
No.
So, and as everyone else said, that the. Theme of the works of the architecture of the building, which I, I think really makes us a strong consideration here.
Can you, going back to the sign, what, what they can put on the sign, I know you can't control the. Can, can you grant this variance and have it be only such that it's approved for. Certain types of rest, like restaurant, coffee shop and event space or it, it has to just be an aggregate, okay? Okay.
For the discussion on monument sign up front. I'm just recalling when I looked at site plans for this, one, there's a couple of things previously we looked at. One was there's an outside seating area in front at one point in time when Bill Walls was there. And then we also asked for landscaping there, which we were able to get. I recall many years ago, this was a pretty barren spot, it just had some tables and nothing. So in the past, the receding and then landscaping was added. And both of those would be problematic with a monument sign. And when we last looked at monument signs, I think their general thought was they're completely prohibited. And we were trying to steer people towards using building mounted ones, which are what our code asks for. And when, whenever those are practical, that was what we were steering people towards and some prior applications. I'm just summarizing that, but. By all means, any other comments? And my other comment is a monument sign is not before us tonight.
That's right.
So I think it is an alternative, but it's no more compatible with code than this roof mounted sign, they're both not allowed. So it's not an alternative that's legal.
Yeah. Right, sorry to have brought that up.
No, I mean, I, I think it's a valid thing to think about. But this. So let's, so I heard commentary first of all on, on the ones hanging under the eaves. And I did not hear any, any concern so far about that, is that, anyone want to comment on that? Okay, sounds like that's an accurate statement, go ahead, Susan.
I, I think it's a lot of signs, frankly, whether they're symmetrical or not. It's a big building, I understand that, but. Anyway, but that's, I, I think it looks very. Not, I don't wanna use excessively s- signed, but um. I think it looks. I think other businesses don't have that opportunity. But that's, you know, kind of given the makeup of their building. But I think uh, have these men, signs that indicate what uh. The services offered are is something quite different.
So, um, so again, back to what we talked about before, if you had. Five, five or six identical signs, it sounds like everyone has agreed, we wouldn't like that, because that starts becoming visual clutter. But if they're different, that becomes a little bit of a different situation.
And I also like them to be connected to the same business if we can have that be part of the condition. They, they can't be, so all six signs, you can't have a condition of approval be that they be connected to a singular tenant.
Well, a singular.
To the same application.
Well, so what I'm saying is if we approve this sign here and then down the road, the signs are in and then. They decide to, they decide to divide that up into multiple spaces and multiple businesses. So all of a sudden, you have approvals for these signs. That start to be assigned to different business owners or different tenants.
Yeah. We can specify, you could specify that this is a variance from one sixty-eight dash seven B one. Where you have an entrance that serves a single commercial establishment. And not where you have an entrance that serves multiple establishments?
Yep. Okay, so this, thank you, this is getting somewhere. So in my mind, I think. This approval has gotta be as tight to a singular business on a single floor as possible. And keeping these signs connected to that single entrance serving a single, right? In addition, I think we should strip the ability to put signage in windows in whatever form and context that may come.
Are there two entrances? Sorry to burst the bubble, but.
Looks like there are two doors.
Steve, are, are, are those entrances both to the same place? You know, yeah, okay.
But in the past, those are, there was two businesses there. There was a business on the left, which was an ice cream shop, and then there's a business on the right, which was a gift shop.
Yeah, okay.
Would that still work then, Mindy?
So I believe, go ahead, sorry.
Let me think, um. No, it's, it's not gonna work because it says we're an entrance. If you have two different entrances and each entrance serves a single commercial establishment. Then you're still have a variance from one sixty-eight dash seven B one.
So would still apply.
So they could still have different signs for different businesses under this approval.
Is there any way in your perspective, we could structure it such that it is. These five signs can only be connected to a single business.
You, you can't regulate speech in the sign code. So you can say that they can't be the same, because you're talking about how it looks visually, but you can't talk about the content.
Okay, so then it would be on H P B to maintain consistency of lettering type. And, okay, so, so there's some consistency of, of color space signage that would all fall upon them, right? We're approving the sign size, the location as it's before us.
And, and you can say as a condition that all the signs will be different.
Yeah, yes.
And we, we could also say that the sign has to be in the location shown, so you, and you can have only one roof mounted sign.
Right.
So that would mean there'd be, not be two roof mounted signs.
Correct.
Yeah. And it would be on the H P B to require, again, consistency in design and standards and all that stuff, so that they look.
Right, so they'd be different, but not too different.
Right, right. And we can eliminate the windows. So to the extent of like Starbucks, how might it be different or other buildings, how might they be different? In this particular instance, you have windows that with this type of approval would never be. Signed up, whereas everybody else could buy right.
Yeah, so I, I think what we're trying to say is if signs are hung from the eaves of the porch, then there shall be no window mounted signs.
Window or door mounted.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I wouldn't even say mounted, just say window signs, because people can paint signage.
Right.
True. You said window or doors, door signage.
There's a, uh, there's a code section that essentially you could uh, uh, withdraw. I just would have to figure out what that code section is.
So, so basically, if they want signs in the windows or door, then they can't hang them from the eaves. If they hang, um, if they hang them from the eaves, they can't do the windows or the door, I think is what we're trying to say. And I'm fine with that.
And can we do it such that it's all or none? Consistent through the entire building. So if it gets, if it gets broken up into two different tenants, left and right side. If the left person wants window signage, it has to be done also by the right person, so that you don't have two signs come down and three signs stay up.
H P B would never prove that, no matter what. They're not, they're never gonna.
Okay.
I, I'm just telling you, they, they would never prove odd signage on the front.
But, but I would disagree.
Even if there's different tenants, you're. And one wants to do windows or signage, there's, I don't understand, it's never gonna be consistent with the variance that was approved.
No, no, but it would be, because if you grant the various for the hanging signs, and they can't do windows, and somebody goes in on one side and they decide, we don't want these silly hanging signs. We wanna put up window signage. Window signage of twenty percent is by right. They don't need approval, and they'd also don't need approval to take down the two signs. So you could have three signs over to the right and no signs on the left, because there's no approval necessary to take them down.
Would that be true?
In a perfect world, that might work, but with the H P B, they would never, never have.
The H P B wouldn't have an opinion on it. You can.
Yes, they would. Well, they would have an opinion on any signage. They still.
They're taking them down. They're taking them down.
Window signage still has to be approved. Door signage, door signage and window signage still has to be approved by H P B. It's visible from a public way.
Okay, so let's say they don't, go ahead, Mindy.
I jump in. You, you can make a condition of approval, that if one sign comes down, they all come down.
Perfect, thank you.
So the ones mounted on the eaves.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, okay, and then we'd have, if someone wanted to put three signs up and have them symmetric, then they just have to.
Have to come back then.
Have to come back.
Right.
Great idea, Mindy.
Thank you.
Perfect.
There is comment in the chat from the sign architect. Does the board wanna entertain that at this time or wait for the public hearing?
Well, I think we've had a lot of debate here. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing and hear whatever everybody wants to say.
Yeah, I mean, he's talking about square footage, that's not the issue, but.
Okay, well, no, it's, go ahead. So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
How do you vote?
Hi.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, so raise your hand if you'd like to talk. I believe there's a little raise hand button that you can click on.
I think it's the sign. Uh, consultant.
Okay, we have a Tony Snow and a Tony.
Yes.
Might be the same person.
It is. I've been trying like crazy to get on here, but uh, I don't, I'm on my phone and my laptop. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, point out that I, I think this total square footage of all the signs. I know it doesn't matter, because it's multiple signs and that's the issue. But the area variance, I think we're still well, then if it was one sign. The total of thirty-three and a half square feet would be less than what is allowed, wouldn't it?
I believe code allows a match of thirty.
Be allowed, because it's, the building is fifty feet long.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the amount. How many square feet?
It, it looks like fifty.
Oh, so.
Because the building is fifty feet long.
One square foot per lineal, okay.
No, I think there's a match of thirty.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, oh, okay.
No greater than thirty, you're right.
Okay, well, is it consent, I mean. We're only foot and a half, or two, three and a half feet over that, so. Yeah, it's such a massive building. We, you put something small and it just gets dwarfed, um. And you don't wanna clutter the main sign up with all that secondary information. Um, and it just, it just looks like those archways are beckoning something to be there for the uh. Uh, interest level and just aesthetically. Helps just bring the whole presence of the, the business or the entity, whatever it might be. Um, just has a, a comfortable presence as opposed to overbearing. And, you know, I, I think that's probably about the only issue is multiple signs in the roof mounted part as far as approval, correct?
You, you're right. I think you, they also, you also need a third one, which is that the total square footage of the sign cannot be greater than thirty square feet.
Well, I don't think there'd be much trouble to shave half an inch or so off of those three, the height of those three or six, five. Hanging signs. You knock them down to seven inches and you start whittling away at a square foot or two. That could be modified without even changing the letter height, so that their impact is similar. If that's a, uh. A consideration um, to help gain approval for Mary Ann.
Well, the applicant will either need to amend the application to specify that, that. Reduction is taking place, or the applicant will need to seek an area variance from the thirty square foot maximum.
Okay, you counter and just say, uh, approved pending the era. Then the reduction in three square feet of the proposed com- total signage. Uh, just.
So Mindy, you're looking at one sixty-eight dash seven B two A, right?
B one.
B one.
Right, because you have an entrance serving a single commercial establishment. And the total signage cannot be greater than thirty square feet at the very end of that sentence.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's only applying to one sign. So the, the, the sentence reads as though it's just relative to the one sign located at the same elevation. It doesn't seem to be an aggregate. Whereas in two A, it references all signs, no more than thirty square feet. So. To me, because this is multiple signs for a single commercial entrance, it wouldn't need a variance greater than thirty.
Oh, because two entrances?
No, because you, each sign is less than thirty is what you're getting at.
Oh, okay.
Because, because it's considered.
Yeah, it's, it's a little weird. I mean, the. B two assumes that there's gonna be more than one sign and B one assumes that there, there will only be one.
One, okay.
So it doesn't envision that you will have multiple signs, because that would pro. Under B one.
It's much easier to just chop it down to thirty square feet than to try and, and.
It might be a lot easier to do that if it's.
Yeah, that, that's why I brought it up, because I, I, I didn't uh, research what the allowance was. And, uh, you know, I, I figured we're under fifty square feet, but, you know, being a. Particularly unique property that, there might be some other regulation, um, so.
Right, so like one sixty-eight dash five D, D. Or E prohibits the placement of signs on a roof.
Right, so that's one variance we're requesting.
Correct.
And.
And B one says that you get one sign.
That's the second, and now the third is either adjust the square footage or.
I think if we grant a variance for one sixty-eight dash seven, what is it, A, B one? Where now you have more than one sign. Then would, what comes after the one sign be consistent with everything thereafter? So, you know, two signs, each one gets thirty square feet.
Or granted, combined not to exceed a certain square feet.
Yeah, but, right, but that's where it doesn't even fly. Okay, so I can see where you're coming from, Mindy, maybe just chop it down to thirty square feet and, and not.
Let's, let's.
Rather than have to reapply, can we just make that a condition of the approval? That's what I wanna, so that we don't delay anything in that. I, I figured that should take care of that, okay?
I think that makes sense to me, if it makes sense to others.
Yeah, because otherwise, otherwise, Dave, David, you could fall into a trap where you, you, we went into the thing about the height. With accessory structure, because if you allowed the sign and said, well, each one could be thirty square feet. Then down in the future, you could end up with somebody wanted two signs and you have sixty square foot of signage that they're.
Yeah, so the variance is essentially taking one sign, turning it into, say, six signs, but still applying the thirty square foot requirement. That makes sense.
Yeah, and I think the historical board might deem it a little more friendly that way, too. Seeing that, you know, they have other things to look at, but. Just would be pretty easy to do. Just half an inch takes off twenty-four square inches per sign times five. Is, that's almost a square foot there, so, you know, a couple inches more here and there.
Okay, Tony, the main sign, if you, if you drop that one down just a touch, that may be more palatable to the board.
Yeah, now, I know some towns, you see the, the logo circle at the top. That negative space on each side of it. I've had the town of Greece come back to me and say, well, the sign actually isn't as big as you told me, because. It was a similar design and they removed that negative space from the total square footage of the sign. But this is Village of Pittsburgh and I, I, you know, every town is different, so. Because just take that negative space off and there's probably three and a half square feet.
I personally would take off negative space. If it's air, it's not a sign in my world.
Yeah.
Sorry, your, 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 your calculation of twenty-one square feet is based on the negative space?
No, the ba, that's based on forty-two by seventy-two. Six, right.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Thirty-two by seventy-two and then add, you know, that fourteen, sixteen inch diameter, or call it a sixteen inch square. Add that uh, square footage and we'd be well below the thirty square feet.
I would, instead of splitting hairs, I would just say that the total square footage of all signage will meet the requirement of the code.
Ah, so Steve, I'll have a question to you as the code enforcement officer. Do you consider signage size? Do you include the uh, negative space?
No, not like, it's like anything else. If I calculate the space of an addition, it's the physical space that's on the print.
Totally.
If I were to measure the sign, it would measure the sign as a square and then add the little feet at the top.
Sounds like a plan of it.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe what I've heard is, the desire is, the square footage of the sign shall not exceed thirty square feet. Or the maximum square footage permitted by code. And I think saying the signs hung from the eaves shall not be greater than forty-eight inches wide and seven point five inches tall. I think both of those make sense.
Yeah. Okay. And I can just create a new drawing that shows the accurate square footage of the main identification sign.
Mm-hmm.
Which, which isn't gonna change, right?
Well. Do we want the total below thirty square feet?
Yes, but.
Yeah.
Isn't it below thirty right now? Or no?
If you, if you take the negative space about that, they calculate with that little bump up on the sign, I believe he is under thirty, as long as you. Don't measure it as a square box with the bump up.
Right, we add the thirty-two by seventy-two to the sixteen by fourteen.
Correct.
And fifty percent of a circle with a radius of who knows what.
Greater than total of that square area.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the code defines the, uh, does define the square footage of a sign and it, it says it's the entire surface area. So the air isn't a surface area.
Right, there's no surface there to measure.
And it doesn't mean, it doesn't state anything about it being to, needing to be rectangular.
Right. Okay. Very good. So I guess, is there anything else I can add to answer any questions about? Or?
I have no other questions.
Nope, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Very good.
Is this, uh? I don't know, a- anybody else have any other thoughts?
I guess, do we have any other comments from the public as a question, we have the public hearing open? Marina, did we get any, um, emailed comments or any other comments from the public?
You didn't read.
I know we did receive a lot of testimonials, Mary Ann did receive a lot of testimonials from local business and everybody that were. Very excited and approved. Um, of all the. Um, the signage that she proposed. I know, somehow we lost Marina, so now I'm the host, which I'm not quite sure about that.
The third promotion today.
Hopefully Marina will come back shortly. Um, so is there any other members of the, Steve, you didn't hear of any other public comments in the office? Other than you said some of the neighboring, um, property owners were supportive.
Yeah, no, there was no negative, like you said, she had five or six letters from local, uh, the other local businesses that were in full approval of her proposals.
And, and that was, um, was that was back for the, uh, special use permit when that was before the trustees, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, um, you know, I'm a former business owner and I certainly, you know, kind of support her enterprise. Um, it just seems to me that a lot of the arguments in, uh, in support of these multiple signs. You know, have been ones that kind of take us a little far field from. Um, you know, considering, uh. Our code, like, you know, they're symmetrical or, you know, I like how they look. Um, so a- anyway, that's just my, my final thought.
And it, just. If there, if the five signs weren't underneath, um, and it was just the roof mounted sign. Would that be more acceptable in your mind, or are you still hung up that it's on the roof?
Uh, I'm, I'm not crazy about it on the roof, but I, I get the limitations of this building. You know, but I think that's a lot of, a lot of signs that aren't branding. Um, it is, uh, it's kind of a different animal to me and it's, I'm not, I'm not clear in personally. You know, whether you get to put, you know, all your services out there, um, as long as it's symmetrical and, you know. You think it looks good. So that's, that's where I stumble, but, um, you know, I'm one.
Yeah, I also get this kind of, um, old trolley building architecture that they're going for. And I, um, I think this is very architecture specific to me. As to, and specific to the way this building looks. I'm kind of thinking that the multiple signs make sense. Um. I, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the look of this, but I'm hearing what you're saying that these signs really, do they really add a lot? They're not talking about the name of the building, they're advertising some of what they would, um, sell, that's also what you would put in a window mounted sign. And, um, these signs are not that big, so I don't really see these signs as being too much more of a. They're not anymore of a problem than having a large window mounted sign.
Okay.
Well, a large window mounted sign, you don't have one of, you wouldn't have five of them.
Yeah, for example.
Or, but if you brought all the windows forward to where the eve is, so make it flush with the, uh, the roof line. Uh, you could have twenty percent of all the windows covered with signage, uh, by right. And here we're basically stripping that provision away, right, and.
Well, the building strips that provision away.
Sure, but I don't think if there's opportunities for the signage, uh, to provide some, um. Public viewing and advertising, you know, for the public, that the building by itself should take away the opportunity for a profitable. You know, enterprise that might benefit from that type of signage, so here I think it's a good balance in trying to use the architecture like it is and. Keeping the area, the total square footage less than the, uh, the maximum. Um, to me makes sense, rather than having one big sign as either a monument or on the roof, which I think would be, uh, much more polarizing. Um, or, you know, for me, I, I, I wouldn't like it as much, um, I think.
Okay. So the applicant. By right could easily put event space, breakfast, lunch, coffee bar and ice cream in each of the windows. At the same, roughly the same size, because that's less than twenty percent of the window, right, if the window is forty-eight inches wide.
Yes.
And. Yeah, so they could easily just slap that in the window and.
That's right.
And with most windows being front forward without the eve like that, this eve takes away that ability, uh, to do that in a meaningful way.
No, I, I get that, um, you know, and, you know, maybe the, uh. The mortgage company will wanna come back and hang more signs and. Um, but anyway, anyway. I'm one and it's just, it's, uh, you know. Something for me to ponder.
Yeah, I, I agree, we can certainly have differing opinions. Um, so did you, did, what is, so is your thought then to have no signs hanging from the eaves or fewer signs? I'm just asking your opinion.
My opinion?
No, Susan's.
Um, I, I think one sign.
From the eve, or one sign total in the front?
Well, when, I mean, if it, I, uh, I understand like.
That was anxiety. Don't be sorry. Oh, man.
Marina, it's like you're back.
Sorry.
Anyway, uh, so I'm. Let's, that, I'm, I'm good.
So then is this, uh, where we go through the. Uh, findings and work our way toward the vote?
We gotta close the public meeting, right?
Yeah, I think we, uh, so was there any other person, so Marina, when you left, we were asking if you received any comments regarding the variance. Uh, from the public, any emails or any other comments?
I will check. No, nothing new is coming.
Okay. Um, and is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak, if so, uh, click on the raising button. Okay, it looks like no one else is looking to speak. All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Dave Marshall.
How do you vote?
Susan Loda, aye.
Dave Marshall, aye.
Joanne Shannon, aye.
Justin Bleedstra, aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Marina, uh, we've got a lot of discussion back and forth about this, let's go ahead, I think we should open up the resolution and work our way through it. Um, the first question I had was, is two variants needed, it sounded. Uh, like Mindy's opinion was yes, we need one to mount one on the roof and we need a second one for the quantity of signs. Um. Yeah, so let's start with the roof mounted one, I, I didn't hear any dissenting comments about that. And this is purely to mount it on the roof, so.
So I can only open the construction of six signs, one.
All right. I need to, I may need to zip them to you, zip them before I send them to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't download anything from the website, so.
No.
Email system, so it's practically.
While they work on that question, Mindy, in that we're, uh, granting these separately, when we grant the. Variants for the roof mounting, can we grant it specific such that the size is identical to what's currently been presented? Maximum, so these are gonna be separate, where rather than doing an aggregate of thirty because they're separate, well, excuse me. When we do the one later for more than one, we'll have to stay true to the thirty for, um, what I'm thinking is would we subtract out? The roof mounted sign and when we grant the permission for the multiple hanging signs. Apply just a square footage maximum to them.
Yes, you can say that the, um, the sign will be no greater than the sign proposed in the application dated September. Fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, perfect, I think that's what we should do.
And what is the width and height on this sign, because we can say the, the width and height of this roof mounted sign shall not be greater than, uh, that.
Well, it says seventy-two feet wide and the main part of the sign is thirty-two inches.
Mm-hmm.
And then. The total height of the sign is forty-two inches.
Yeah. We, we should have him give us the radius of the circle. So you can specify that, so, right, there's no reason to. Get bamboozled and it get, and it turn twice the size, right, let's just get a, an appropriate drawing with all the dimensions.
It, it is, it's a sixteen inch diameter circle is noted on the top right corner of.
Right, it's still hard to read, yeah.
Yeah, and it, and it's not, the whole sixteen inch diameter circle is not outside of that rectangle, so. But, yeah, I will, I can modify that and submit a more ac- uh, more readable. Version and not such a large file that'll transmit.
Yeah.
Good sixteen, we'll just write that sixteen.
I, I mean, I think if we grant approval, it's just to the space and the, the size, um, indicated on the application and then. The math works out to what the math will work out to be.
Okay.
Oh, um, we could say something like eighty percent of the sign must be less than thirty-two inches high or thirty-two inches high.
Sure, I think the H P B is gonna have their own opinions on things, but we, I think if we grant it to a certain area, right? Then that's enough and let the design and how it flows around be. Unique to the applicant and the H P B.
So what, what is the area of this sign, I think is a question, is a applied for.
It's actually. It's approximately sixteen square feet as opposed to the twenty-one square feet listed on the drawing. If we take the thirty-two by seventy-two and add, uh, three quarters of a sixteen inch diameter circle. Area. Comes out to pretty much sixteen square feet and then you add the twelve and a half square feet. And we're. Oh, I'm wrong, I'm sorry, sixteen square feet is for the thirty-two by seventy-two. Then a four, twelve inch by sixteen inch area is approximately one point three three square feet. And then the twelve and a half square feet adds up to total of twenty-nine. Point eight square feet.
So, so for the roof mounted one, first of all, you said that's about seventeen point four.
Yeah.
So if we say it, it shall not exceed eighteen square feet.
Yep.
That seem reasonable to everybody? Yes, that's what we do.
Steve's hands up, but that's good by me.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that, I actually just drew it down and used a calculator and came up the exact same thing. So he will be just, the, the large sign will be actually seventeen point six square feet. And the other signage is twelve square feet, so he will be under. The thirty square foot total.
Yeah.
Okay. And if someone in the future wants to sign more than eighteen square feet on the roof. If we approve this, they have to come back to us, but that's okay.
Yes, very much okay.
Uh, Justin, I can't get the document that you sent me open, I can open the other one, but not the first one. Um, so if anybody else wants to drive you, I think you should all have screen sharing, um, permissions.
So I sent you the zip file and that didn't work either?
No, uh, I, I don't, I don't know why this is like this.
Let's, um. Can you, uh, beg people to get a fix for this?
I, I, can you see me and see my photo? Or am I just a voice?
You're just a voice.
Yeah, you don't have sharing permissions.
Okay. Cuz I have it printed right here in front of me and I can screenshot it or whatever, but.
Oh, no, we're looking for our, uh, resolution document.
Oh.
That, um, is gonna basically be our findings and, um. Uh, conditions of approval and so on.
Okay, gotcha. There it is.
No, Dave is a parent. Okay, so you got it, Dave, and Marina did not, okay. Um. Okay, so this one is for the one on the roof. So for this one, um, I guess the, the action is gonna be construction of a roof mounted sign.
All right. Not to exceed eighteen square feet.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be later and, uh.
Okay.
Seventeen point four.
Yeah.
Okay, that lists the code citation, Mindy, I believe that was the one you listed, is that correct?
Uh, let me just double check one sec.
If you have any, um, conditions on that legally in that paragraph, please speak up.
Okay. That's the correct citation for a roof.
Yeah. Okay.
Did this have to be, uh, referred to Monroe County?
I believe it was, is what Steve said, and Steve said he heard back from them.
Okay.
So I haven't seen the response, I don't think they had any concerns. I've never seen them have a concern, I don't think.
No, they.
What do they do?
Like I said, I just got the email and they, they had no concerns about the sign it, or any of this.
So their response was today, so you put today's date in?
Yeah, it actually came in yesterday, uh, it leads to my email, but I got it today.
Okay, so they sent it on, they're working on Sunday?
Probably would have sent it on Friday, I imagine, and for whatever reason, it just showed up in my email as yesterday with a group.
All right, well, that's good enough.
No, nevermind, okay, moving on.
Okay, so the secret citation, Mindy, I, I stuck in a, it was construction of a non-residential structure under four thousand square feet.
Close enough.
It's either ma- maintenance or rehabilitation or.
It's not any of those, right.
But it, you're building something under four thousand square feet, a sign isn't very big.
Right.
Okay, so then, uh. Comments here?
So, uh, a comment I heard earlier from John Katura was. So, uh, a comment I heard earlier from John Cattura was reflecting on this is a commercial district. And it's not a residential district, so signs are presumed. And we also, um, I'm just thinking of the roof mounted sign in particular, um, I, I think there is a little lack of clarity, is it done elsewhere? There is comments that there might be some others in fifty state street, but, um, there is a little uncertainty about that.
So I think they're right behind in that circle on Shen Place, you know, right behind forty-five, whenever is it on the map?
Oh.
Fifty State Street?
Right, Northfield Common.
That's efficient.
So, and I think the other thing, though, the materials of the sign were wood. Is that correct?
Correct, cedar.
So the sign, so it's a wooden painted sign, which is consistent with other signs in the village.
Would this be the right spot to put something about, um, the architecture of the building and trying to be consistent, I guess, with? I wouldn't say it's inconsistent, but is this where you put it? Something about the, uh, the design style of the building or no?
Um, oh, what are people's opinions on the roof mounted one? I just think that was the most feasible option, which goes into B, the other ones, the ones hanging from the eaves, I thought worked kind of with the architecture of the building. That was my personal thought.
Yeah, you're, okay, you're right, I'm skipping ahead. Um, do we need?
By all means, you're, you're feel free to comment.
No, this is good. Uh, do we need anything else there? Would anybody else like to add anything? And is will not?
I'm with will not.
I'm with will not.
Any other opinions?
No.
Okay. So I'm gonna move to B, how about benefits offered by the applicant? Cannot, or here do we say can, but then we reference why it's not, uh, recommended?
Well, I don't believe we found another feasible method. Uh, we talked about signs in the, um, uh, we talked about monument signs, but those are also illegal.
Yeah.
Right, and the application states that due to the building configuration, the sign cannot be mounted to the lower front. Where there's no other viable place to put the signs. If the board thinks that's, you know, part of its.
Yes, oh, we, we heard there's no places between the windows or between the windows and the door or over the door.
Right.
All right, moving on, I think, unless anybody else has additional comment?
Oh, there's also no flat space on the, on the front facade to hang a, a sign.
Yeah.
So I think in C, we say it is substantial because it's either A or B, yes or no, it's, you know, either zero or one, so um, even though it, it it may not in the end be substantial from a resident impact perspective, I think it's substantial in that it's either yes or no, it's not any middle ground, there's no shades of gray here.
Right. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree that it is substantial. I think we've looked at this before and roof mounted signs are not allowed by code. Right, I'm fine with that.
Pretty clear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, um, back to B, yeah, I think, um, I think it's also useful to note that, um, the front of the building is, uh, has landscaping and used to have outdoor seating. Does that make sense to add as a, a point of view, but that also makes it difficult to locate signage such as even a monument sign?
I don't think so.
It doesn't have outdoor seating now.
I don't think that's.
What about, um, what about us, uh, the, the center walkway up to the front? Is that important to note here? Nah, okay, we'll leave it alone. I think it's sufficient.
Yep.
Well, I think the whole idea is to put as much here as practically possible um, to make this one-time variance very specific to this building. So I think anything, anything else that you can think of in looking at the front of that building that prevents you from putting that sign?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, uh, I agree with that. We usually try to peg these as much as possible to the property so that we don't set a precedent on other properties.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, significant E. And low.
I think that's, uh, vertical spacing, right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And that the windows are set back, right? Or do we already have that?
Yeah.
We're truly no person. I think it filled the ceiling, the eve, and the window, and the windows are set back from the front of the eve, right?
Yeah.
Limiting visibility.
Uh, they're set back underneath a port, underneath a deep porch.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
All right. Two. You do, oh, come on. All right. Oh, we can clean it up later, but that's good.
We can clean it up later. Thank you for doing, uh, tripos or typing, by the way.
Yeah, all right, so the proposed variance will, will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood and district.
We can do C A again.
C A?
Yeah.
What do we say here again, Justin? You've.
I usually, we usually say, but this alone does not preclude granting an area variance.
And you can also comment on the unique configuration of the front of the building that you discussed in B.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. The unique architecture and challenges of this building.
Is that all right?
It's okay with me.
A few. Yeah. Okay. Um, is or is not the minimum? Uh, is not. Well.
It is, there's no others.
Yeah, okay.
Only option.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Is there any, uh, general wordage here, Justin, that we put in?
Um, we had not found any other viable options. That are permitted by code at least.
You're right. Can I say C A again, or C B?
Or leave it blank?
For this, following physical characteristics of the property irrelevant? Right? It's just a cotton based.
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
So, um, it'd be nice, I think, if we can get this somewhat cleaned up. I think we're pretty good with your market as draft. But I, since the H P B is meeting tomorrow, I think it might be nice to send them at least a draft copy of a resolution so they can see what we looked at.
Okay. And I think we're good so far. Uh, any additional findings are noted that we? I don't have any additional findings. But we do have, um, the conditions of approval.
Yeah, we have plenty of conditions of approval.
Well, I think the conditions are gonna go to the, the other variants though, aren't they?
Well, we have the size of this area of this.
Yeah.
Right. Eighteen point four?
Uh, seventeen point six.
Oh, I got seventeen point four.
I, I was gonna say that the square footage or the sign shall not exceed eighteen square feet in area is what I was gonna put the roof mounted sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. That, or is that H P B?
I think we could say that should be mounted in the center of the building.
Yep.
And there shall be only one mounted roof sign.
And it should be right, it should, uh, it should be right to the front. Right? It's shown, it's like setback just a tiny bit.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Is that good? And no farther than from the eve, no farther from the eve uh, than as listed in this application?
Shall we do that, or shall we let the H P B figure out where the location is?
Not, I want it across the top of the roof line like in, uh, um, like a Bill Gray's or something, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You had the very peak of the roof.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna go with this, I, I wanna be as influential as I can be before somebody tells me I'm overstepping.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, is we should tie this to be specific to the property. Um, the distance is not listed.
Okay, no, no greater than one foot?
Certainly, certainly no greater than two feet is what, what it's shown.
Okay. No farther from the, uh, is that called, what are you, is that the eve?
Softet?
Softet?
Maybe, I don't know.
That's a big.
Is it a freeze, an eve, is it a freeze, freeze board, cornice, something like that?
Or say roof edge?
Roof edge, ah, there we go.
Lower roof edge, right?
Oh.
There we go.
Front-facing lower roof edge.
Whoa, two feet, not two foot.
I know, I know, I'm getting there.
Okay.
All right, good. Um, uh, we gave it a square foot requirement, but, uh.
Oh, no more than one roof mounted sign.
Uh.
Uh, at least on this side of the building at least.
What's the height of what's been proposed?
Saying it not to exceed seventy-two inches in length?
Uh, no, because I'd rather have it be shorter than, I'd rather have it be wider than taller, so I was gonna put a cap on the height equal to the cap of the
Forty-two inches.
Forty-two inches? Everybody all right with that?
You sure you want it at the height of the, of her little extra?
Yeah, that was, something I was struggling with is the main, uh, main part of it is thirty-two inches high.
Right.
Doesn't strike me as that bad, but if the whole thing was forty-two inches high, I might have a problem with that. But the H P B is probably the ones that would be the one dictating what it looks like.
Yeah, this is putting at least some upper limit. It's not super controlling, but, you know, influential enough.
Okay.
Okay. Um, was there anything else that we had for this?
The other thing you can do is just say it needs, if you put in that it's eighteen square feet and specify the length at seventy-two inches, then that governs the height and there's no way it's ever gonna be taller than that given that with the circle.
They can put, make it one foot wide and then twelve feet tall.
They can make a triangle, or they, yeah, they could do something really weird and wide and then straight up like a sky.
No, 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 I'm saying if you mandated that it must be seventy-two inches in length, right? With the square footage, they're never gonna get a height greater than thirty-three inches, right?
They said the width must be a minimum of seventy-two inches?
No, it must be seventy-two inches.
They could have an upside down T, John.
I'm, I'm thinking that's overdictating it, because as Dave said, I don't care if it's wider, um, as long as it's not both wide and tall.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? An upside down T, you could have a one-inch-high sign that goes seventy-two inches and then just straight vertical in the middle.
Okay, okay, that'd be ridiculous.
Okay, moving on, um, shall we vote?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion. Oh wait, hang on just a second. Um, we don't know until we vote, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, area variance for forty-five Sheen Place for mounting a sign on the roof for the reasons discussed.
I'll second that.
Okay, member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Cattura?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Interperson Belistras?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so Dave, you wanna copy A? Okay, so Dave, you wanna copy A to D before you close it up?
Up. A to D. Yep.
And at some point before emailing this around to people, just put a little draft watermark in there. But we can move on to the next one before you deal with that.
All right. And whatever, is that close, is that good enough? That little draft sign?
That might be good enough.
All right.
I don't remember where the watermark is, somewhere in there.
Yeah. All right, I'll send that off to Marina.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
And now we have the next one for the quantity of signs.
Anybody else wanna type?
You're doing a great job, Dave.
No one volunteers to be secretary.
It requires. Yeah, okay.
I thought Marina could open this one.
Oh, cool.
Marina, can you do this one?
Yeah, I can do this one. I couldn't do the first one.
That's all right. I didn't mind.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Wait, so let's go back to the first, one of the first where us is, this is a variance from one sixty.
This is the wrong one.
Right. This is from one sixty.
This is the roof one, Dave. You have the wrong one open.
Oh, this isn't me.
No, no, it's, it's, it's a little, it's conflated. So we should talk about one sixty-eight dash seven B one.
One sixty-eight dash seven B one is the single sign not to exceed thirty square feet.
Right.
We're changing that to five.
Right.
Or six, if we're including the roof.
So that would be construction of five signs.
In addition.
Five, or six signs on the front facade.
Correct, of which five are the hanging signs.
Right.
Okay. So they could fill in the date for county planning review, which was yesterday. Steve? So it was October seventeenth. Oh, I had a question on the last one. Did we need to put a condition of approval of H P B approval? Or are we just saying they're allowed to put a roof mounted sign up?
Yeah.
So you think?
I don't think you need to make it subject to H P B approval, because if they don't get H P B approval, it doesn't matter that you gave them approval to put up a roof mounted sign.
Yeah.
And if they convince H P B in the future, then officially we're fine with that per what we did.
Yes.
Okay. So the architecture, we talked about this at length. And I think the comments we heard from people were the five signs hung from the eve were symmetric. And the stated theme was what, a trolley station theme?
Depot, rail depot.
Rail, yeah, and with a rail depot theme that worked with the building. Is that basically what we said?
Yeah. Also. Yeah, the aesthetic.
Aesthetics and architecture of the building.
It's, it's an existing commercial area.
Yeah, just like the last, we're copying and pasting Dave's.
Yeah, you can steal from the prior one, like John said, Marina, if you take a look at it.
What, what else was in here, Dave?
You can. Yeah, I can open it back up.
Real quick.
Yeah, hold on.
I would say email it to Marina, but she might not get it.
I did email it. So what else did we say? Commercial district, not a residential, signs are presumed. There are a few instances of other roof, that's roof mounted stuff. Materials of the sign are wood and painted, which is consistent with other signs.
There you go.
Yeah, that, that's important to me.
Yeah.
And the color of the sign, I think, is compatible with the color of the building. But maybe we can't talk about color.
I, I think both those things, we can say, offer comment, but it's not gonna hold up. I mean, that's the H P B.
Well.
No, we can. We're making our own findings. We've looked at, I'm just thinking back to one we looked at before, where we, we did find materials and appearance were consistent with the architecture of the building. And that was important to us. And I think for that one, we didn't like a corporate branded logo made of concrete, for example. But we were fine with the wooden sign painted amongst the corner of the building.
I think that whole section can be copied from the one we just did, where we made all the statements, minus the roof mounted.
The one comment, though, in the, in the prior one, we didn't have a condition of approval be that it was wood for the roof mounted sign. Here, are we going to have that be a condition of approval?
We should, I would think.
And should we amend the prior one? With a motion.
Sure.
I agree. I think we should amend the prior one to the roof mounted sign shall be wood.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that a motion to amend the prior resolution to add a condition of approval that the sign shall be constructed of painted wood.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so unanimous approval. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna forward you the new one, Marina. Okay. I don't, so for B, I think it's cannot. I, I don't think that the benefits could be achieved in window signage. And obviously, we don't have monument signs. There's no other place to put signage.
Just like the last one, you're gonna write that, you know, the, there's a depot, a deep porch, right, setback windows, there's a wise seating in front of the building.
But this is for the six signs. Why did, why do you need five more signs?
Yeah, and with that, Susan already commented on that, that she's like, she was good with the one on the front. We've asked other people to have one on the front.
Okay.
So so what's the reason for the additional signage? I think what our individual opinions are leading us towards is not that it's required or not, but whether or not the impact on the community is worse than the benefit to the applicant. So the, so it's beneficial to the applicant, but I think the denominator there is a concern, is, is this actually harming the, harmful to the community? That's how I see this, at least.
You see.
And we can have differing opinions on that. It's not consistent with what other buildings are doing. Go ahead, Susan.
So you see this as referencing harm to the community?
I think that's.
That's not B.
No, I'm not saying that's in B, but I'm just saying how I see this is, the impact of this, could there be, there could be some other things they can do. I would agree that we don't need to approve this at all, but the reason to, my statement is the reason to consider approving this is that it benefits the applicant, and I think as depicted, it may not adversely impact the community. But that is not being it, you're correct.
Yeah, I I, I think those should be separate.
All right, that may, I'm just, okay, that doesn't need to be in B. So maybe, um.
To the benefits, so my question here is, the benefits sought by the applicant are to express additional signage as to what they're selling. Other methods would be putting it in the window, right, using the twenty percent coverage.
Or just having one sign like everybody else.
Yeah. They, they could have one sign like others.
Though many, many others advertise in windows. Actually, most advertise in windows.
Like what?
Main Street, all of Main Street.
Like what?
Your old shop.
That's, that, nope.
But yeah, she used to have a sale sign and stuff like that in the front window. Lots of places on Main Street would do stuff like that. You take a look at Embrasse, why, they would always have that, in their front window, they would have a display and signage.
Yeah, those are temporary signs.
That's correct.
Anyway, continue.
Yeah, maybe you just leave it that benefits could be achieved with window signage.
Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm okay going the opposite direction with this one.
Our alternative.
But they would be, the, the window signage would be much less visible, is I think the trade-off.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you think something.
Hold on, I don't think we wanna say that.
A, a business that's called Common Ground needs to have a sign that says coffee.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna say that in B. We don't need, we don't need, you don't need all five to grant it. Because I think any business is gonna come in and say, you can't see the sign, I need to put one up. I would say just delete that for right now, we can come back to it.
Or just, just say, benefits could be achieved with other types of signage.
Yeah.
There, the difference is, part of the benefit is visibility, though. If your sign isn't readily visible, it's not doing much good.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think the problem we had with mounting signs is mounting large signs. So the big one on the roof, you couldn't put that anywhere. A small sign that says coffee, maybe you could put something somewhere?
There are very few other, so this is gonna be a challenge. So go back to A for a second, so I can see A and B at the same time. If you wouldn't mind, Maria, scroll up a little bit. Thanks, yeah, right there. All right, so the variance undesirable change. Okay, so do we have enough comment in A?
Well, it's not there because she didn't paste it in yet.
Okay, right, so the question, so the reason why I'm asking this is because if B, if the benefits could be achieved by some other feasible method, and A isn't strong enough, right, to suggest that this is unique to this particular building, then you're gonna have a whole lot of other people asking for signs, and lots of them. And so A's and, and I don't think A is the spot to do it, so because that's just relative to the rest of the character to the neighborhood. So I, I think in B, if, if this is potentially gonna allow these signs to be hung, then where in the, the rest of this document do we put, it's specific to the building, the, the architecture of the building, without it being a, hey, a whole bunch more signs are coming in?
Yeah, I'd agree. I mean, the, the architecture of the building is the only reason I'm considering this, and I think that trolley station thing, theme makes sense to me.
Yeah, so scroll down to C and D and E and see if there's another one that will so that's environmental conditions, you don't, no, keep going. The what's that?
G, the physical characteristics of the building.
Perfect, okay, good. So we can keep going. Go back up to B, I'm okay with that being as it's listed now. Thank you. So I think, yeah, B's fine. It can be achieved elsewhere else. Maybe not to the same extent, though.
But this, yeah.
It's.
So, and then I guess we gotta say it is substantial, because six signs are proposed where one is allowed.
I agree. Just C A? Yeah.
Yeah, I would copy that from A, and I would say well not.
I would agree.
I agree. I don't know.
And again, this one is self-created.
I took the coffee.
Thanks. What? Does he look in there?
So I would just say the desire for six signs instead of one is self-created.
Yeah.
But that doesn't preclude you from granting the variance.
Yep.
Now, I think the commentary we had for F, I'm just thinking about it with a question of, we liked the symmetry of the five signs and thought it worked well with the architecture of the building, and we actually thought fewer signs would be a detriment to that. I believe is what we heard, what I heard.
I agree with that statement.
Yeah, no signs would not be symmetrical. That's right.
So we, I think what we said is five or none, is what we were basically saying.
Yes. I agree, five or none.
Is that is not then?
We're saying it is the minimum necessary. This is the one, this is the one there is no wiggle room. We're required to give the minimum variance we deem necessary. But what we deem necessary is totally subjective.
Yeah, but then, then I think, why don't we tie it to G then? Because that's where we're gonna have to layer in the physical nature of the building. It, it's the minimum necessary. Scroll down a little bit.
Yeah, well, we can go down and start filling in G and then maybe copy and paste.
Well, that, and you wouldn't be getting the depot look if you, if you had fewer than five, if you didn't space them in between each of those poles.
It's the minimum necessary, given the physical characteristics of the property, C G.
I don't know what trolley building you guys are referencing, but anyway.
Absolutely.
No, I, I thought they said depot. He said it is the depot theme, right?
It's more of a theme. It's more of a theme than an actual architecturally significant comment.
Home Depot has lots of signs, so trolley depot must too. I'm joking, sorry.
It's alright.
Yeah, most of the trolley depots I'm pulling up on the images, um, look kind of like, uh, corrugated steel and. Uh, not exactly the charming things we have in mind.
Well, even with six signs, it still certainly looks better than the building directly to the left, which is a dump. That's been sitting vacant for how many years?
Many.
Yeah. Some flexibility might get somebody to come in and actually do something.
If, if this is our, if this is our pitch.
Just send it in.
Okay, so the, the physical characteristics.
This is the problem. It is. This is the problem, right? What are we doing? We're beating up on people. It, it makes no sense.
Well, I think we're on item G right now. We're not discussing the adjacent property. So, um. Uh, so we had things to copy from the last one where I believe what was stated was there is a port, there's a deep porch in front of windows. The front of the building. Has many challenges to mounting signs.
Well, don't you want to say something about the one, two, three, four, five, the six, uh, support posts? And, and you know, invite, uh, signs. At the, in, between those spaces.
Yeah, I completely agree.
And what you call those little angle, um, brackets above the posts? Oh.
Angle brackets. Oh.
Oh, there's a term for it.
The structure at the top.
Yeah, gables?
No.
No. The.
Alright, I, I don't think of the term maybe eventually. I mean, maybe not tonight, though. Gingerbread is, uh, what some of that stuff is called sometimes, but I don't think that's a technical term for it.
Aren't they support straps?
I think they're purely decorative. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah. Corbel? Is it a corbel? C O R B E L?
Oh, I got me.
I think that's it.
That looks like that might be the term.
What is it?
Corbel, C O R B E L.
Okay.
A porch corbel.
Yeah, look at that.
Uh, does that project forward instead of projecting sideways or is it?
Anything under a right angle, offering architectural like support. Anyway, alright, so, so this is where we basically put everything about the physical property that we did in the last one, paste it in here.
Yeah, um, but then I think the, um, no, under, keep it in G.
Yeah, keep it in G. No, that's what I meant. Anything from the other ones put in G. If you already know that, then we can move on.
So copy statements from the last resolution, item A, um, into item G.
Yeah.
Okay, um, but I think the other thing we were talking about was, um, the stated. The materials and, and, uh, trolley depot theme work with the architecture of the building, I think was one of the key things. And we thought fewer signs, um, would work, would not work as well. And we also. I'm, I'm trying to think the other thing. Why didn't we want fewer signs? And ultimately, why are we actually doing this at all? Uh, per Susan's point, they don't need to do any of them, any of these five.
That's right.
Is that under additional findings?
I'm, I'm kind of thinking aloud here.
Okay.
Well, what I heard you guys say is that five signs there look better than no signs there.
I think five signs there look better than no signs there. I don't know if that's a shared opinion. Actually, I know that's not. So I don't know if in the additional findings, we can offer comments in terms of differing views, right? Maybe, you know, some board members expressed that five signs look better than no signs, uh, and others, you know, didn't share that view. I, I don't know if that's where we put that sort of thing.
No, no, I don't think, I think.
You're going to voice that in the vote.
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine.
Um, under, I'm just thinking back to G here. What was my thought? I just, um. Again, why are we doing this at all if we're doing this?
I think it enhances the, the.
Well, we, well, I don't, do we agree that it doesn't detract from the character of the building?
I agree with that statement.
Others may not. I think it does not detract from the architecture of the building, and whether it's better or not is another matter.
Um, I, I think that, I, I don't think it detracts. I, my question is, is it necessary? But.
Yeah, that, that's a, a completely valid question.
But.
And, uh, oh, the other comment I would add is, um, other, there are potential other places that signs could be mounted. But they would be far less visible and not achieve the same benefit to the applicant.
Correct.
So we weigh all these factors and we make a determination. What, I mean, the, the, the net result, I, I, I don't think, I don't think this harms the look of the building. I don't think it harms the, you know. The, the neighborhood, which is a commercial district, but it's certain, and I don't believe it harms like nearby properties. Right?
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I'm at, I see this as beneficial to the applicant. I agree it's not required. But I don't see the harm in it is ultimately where I'm at, is the benefit outweighs the impact. And, but I completely agree, it's not required.
I agree too.
And, and I would add to that, all those things and the unique characteristics of the building invite this type of signage. Cause I, there's a lot, yeah, anyway.
I would, I would say, I like that statement. Um, and. So I maybe put in H, if we agree that, um, the, we believe the benefits to the applicant. Uh, outweigh the impact, outweigh negative impacts, that might be a good thing to state in, in H.
Yeah.
Okay. Can anybody tell me a negative impact to this other than it not being required? That's not a negative impact. What's the negative impact?
Precedent.
Come on, give me a negative impact. Is there something harming to the building, the neighborhood or the community by doing this?
It's the slow roll of precedent.
Anything else?
Not in my view.
Yeah, so, so I mean, that's the reason to tie it to the architecture of the building and make it building specific.
Yeah.
And so above, you had the sentence there, well, not required. Um, we talked, uh, what was Dave, your statement? I liked your statement.
Uh, the unique characteristics of the, uh, building architecture invite signage as, uh, applied.
Or proposed. Applied under the.
Right, as proposed.
Proposed.
As proposed. Very good.
Proposed under the E's.
Yes.
So then the sentence above that, I think you could get benefits outweigh negative impact, get rid of that. Um, and say well not, leave well not required in there.
Well, if it were required. It's, it's not required. I mean, it's prohibited.
Do you want to get rid of that too? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, just say the unique characteristics.
But so is our consideration always, does it, is that, it, does it do harm?
No, I think it's the totality of the factors, right?
Yeah, it, it's a balancing test. Which is why H may be a little superfluous. I mean, that's the conclusion that you draw after you've finished weighing and balancing the factors that are under the statute.
What is the actual resolution down below? I think that's basically copied from state law.
I guess in my mind is if there's no negative impacts, right? No negative impacts, so it's kind of like a neutral rating, right? And the benefits are, it's, you know, it, you know, five signs, unique characteristics of the building, it looks good. Then that kind of, you know, tips the scale just a tad, and that's all you need.
Yeah, and, uh, as far as setting precedent goes, where I really draw the line and. We need to think about it carefully is if there is nothing particular to the property that causes this to make sense. If there are no unique characteristics of the properties, they just want it because they want it. That's where I have a harder time and those get really hard to justify because those set a precedent.
I agree.
Um, so if someone wants a, a forty foot wide driveway and there's no, nothing. Relevant to the property that causes that to make sense, then why would you grant it? So, um, that, that's where I started having a challenge. So when you find reasons particular to the property such as challenges and mounting the signs. The code recognizes secondary signage is valuable because we allow, uh, building, uh, window mounted signs and other signs. But the question is, when you can't place them, I, I do get it that everybody's going to want them. So, um, that's where the unique characteristics come from. And I think as we've kind of been doing, you got to look at it on a piece by piece basis.
Perfect. Alright, so moving on. That was fair. Alright, so I've got just a couple here. Um, so one is if one of the five comes down, they all come down. I don't know if there's a better way to say it.
One of the five eve, eve mounted signs is removed. Right.
Alright, the, the wording must be different.
Wonder if she takes two down and there's still symmetry.
You can't, there's five, there's five signs.
Right.
You take the two and four down.
Yeah, I wouldn't object to that, but I, I still think five look better than three. But you could also have two as long as they're symmetric, but, um. I don't know. I'm okay with that. That's what the applicant wants.
Yeah, let's create what they want, and then if somebody wants something different, they have to come back. Uh, the other one was, uh, the wording must be different. So no sign shall say the same thing.
No, you can't talk about wording. Talk about the, the signs, the signs shall be different.
All six signs on the front of the building shall be different.
Yeah.
Okay, and in this case, it just so happens to be the wording?
Yes.
So I would say mounted on the canal facing facade of the building. So. We, we calling it the front, but there is probably two fronts to this.
Okay.
It, it should be five, five signs.
Yeah, the five eve mounted signs again.
No, there's six signs on the front.
I would just make all six different. Doesn't matter. None of them going to be the same.
One, oh, the size of it, I believe the size shall be forty eight inches wide maximum. And seven point five inches tall maximum.
And then painted wood.
Yeah, constructed of painted wood.
I'd say painted wood on the next one, maybe.
Can we require them to be consistent in, um.
So I would put all those dimensions as maximums. I don't care if they make them shorter, and that's seven point five inches high, not seventy five.
That's a good catch. Um, can we in any way require, uh, color consistency in the painting or, um, placement of the sign in terms of height to the eve or height to the? Roof line?
They should be centered, centered, centered between the, whatever you call those things.
Yeah, post pillars.
Yeah, center between the posts and how are they mounted? Better question, was it a little?
A post and placed in the location shown.
Yeah, place in the locations as shown. Okay, that would be fun.
And again, um, the, the dimensions are maximum dimensions. So seven, forty eight inches, yeah.
Yeah, um, shall they be, uh, color, uh, consistent?
I think they, I, I mean, I would say the signs should all have the same background color and same lettering color.
Isn't that kind of an?
We can do that.
It may be, but if, I don't know. I mean, we can leave it alone.
I agree that if one was pink and one was purple and one was orange and one was white and then one was a yellow, I don't think I like that very much.
I don't think I would either. And I, I think my willingness to say yes to this is contingent upon that. Um, and.
I, I think the background color of the signs should match the, um, color of the building personally.
Yeah, I don't think it does here. How about consistent with the coloration of the roof mounted sign?
Or all.
I don't care if, I don't have a care if I match that.
All, all six signs need to have the same background and same text color period.
Yeah, me too.
In my opinion.
Me too. I'm not voting yes for it without it.
All, all six signs, same background color, same text color.
Yeah, maybe you want these, some of these are separate, uh, conditions here. We have size and then we have the color.
Yeah.
Color, maybe, uh, one condition is the sign shall be painted wood. Number four, or is science shall be painted wood.
With the same color, um, consistency as, um, but with, with.
The explicit same colored background, same colored text.
Yeah. And put all six signs, uh, in the front rather than thinking it might just apply to the hanging five.
And add a, add a T to paint.
Yeah.
All six, only five of them are eve signs. All six signs.
Yeah.
Yep, just take.
Right.
Yep.
And then.
One more thing.
With the same color background and the same color text.
Yeah.
Consistent makes it a little, um, more ambiguous.
Yeah.
But with the same colored background and the same color text, yes. Would you say with the same?
And the same colored perimeter border. That's all.
Same colored background, comma, text, comma, and perimeter border.
Yep.
There we go.
Hey, do we want to say font size? No.
Can't.
Okay.
Because the five is not going to have the same font size.
I know, that's what I was thinking. Do we want to require that the five eve signs have the same font size and font?
I, I would agree to that.
I agree with that. I mean, all of this is hyper, hyper conditional to this exact.
Well, I mean, it's got to think of it, someone else may do something different. What would make it garish and, um, not good? Um, and that's what we want. um, not good. Um, and that's what we want to eliminate.
I, I also think we should uh, uh, say, suggest that the signs, the five hanging signs, well, we're not, uh, we're not approving any lighting for these signs. Is that correct? There's no lighting applied for, no lighting of.
You say all five email signs have same.
Oh, yes, eve mounted signs shall not be eliminated.
Right. And the same font and the same um.
Text size.
Text size. Eve mounted signs shall be of the same font, text size and will not be eliminated. Is the prior approval on the roof mounted sign, there was no request for lighting? Uh, that means none is granted?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
There shall be no window signs or door signs for so long as there are five eve signs.
Yep.
You know, we got a couple more conditions here.
So this would be six. I'm going to oscillate back and forth for visual um, uniqueness.
The square footage of all combined signs shall not exceed thirty square feet.
They uh.
Yep. And the, so we want the max and they must all be um, but why don't we just require them to be the size as illustrated in the application?
Shall not exceed thirty square feet. Um, and, and so the area of all signs shall not some, was it some to greater than thirty square feet or the maximum area permitted by code?
Yeah. I'm okay leaving it thirty square feet because if the code changes, I don't want this to change.
Did Tony say what the combined square footage is?
Twenty-nine.
It was thirty.
Twenty-nine point eight.
He can make it thirty square feet.
Yeah.
We're only putting maximum dimensions. We're not putting minimum dimensions.
Could we?
He wants to make each one a quarter inch shorter, he can do that.
Yeah. So here's a quick question. So right now they're hanging rectangles um, that are of consistent length. Um, I think we should hold that to be true here too. So the five eve signs shall be consistent in dimensions um, and
So in the one, in the, in the bullet point upwards says the size of the signs we know, I don't know, just write there for now.
Shall be consistent in shape and size.
Yeah.
All right, I got a comment. Go ahead.
I don't like consistent. They need to be the same.
All right, be the same. Yep, sounds fine.
So um, back to where we were at with H, I was just looking up the code and it says in make, this is what state law says, in making its determination, the zoning board of appeals shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. So that's, that's the official balancing test we have to do.
Yeah.
We have to consider all these criteria.
Okay. I am. Anything else for um, conditions?
I'm looking at my notes and I didn't find any other conditions.
Okay. Can the um, what's the, the, the lowest height that any one side can be? Does it matter?
I don't care if they put a one inch sign up.
All right. Okay. I, do you care if they hang five circles?
If they're under seven point five inches high, it wouldn't bother me.
Okay.
If they're taller than seven and a half inches, I'd want to look at it probably.
Okay.
But say they're rectangular.
Yeah, I think we keep it rectangular.
Say they're rectangular.
Right. I, I'd like to keep it rectangular. Um.
So we're just, yeah.
If they're oval, would it bother you? I do kind of like a rectangular.
Yeah, just say five E shines shall be rectangle, the same rectangular shape. Oh, that's fine. Shall be rectangular in shape and size.
And uh, uniform in size.
Hey, uh, anyone?
Yeah.
Uh, I can't start the video because it says the host has stopped it.
Oh, you had to call in by phone?
Uh, no, I'm, I, my battery ran out, but now.
I had that problem a little while ago too. I had to go find a charger.
Yeah.
It just made you a co-host. You should be able to share a video now.
Okay, thank you. Um, not yet. That's all right.
Can you see the video?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Rectangular in shape and uniform in size. That sounds good. All right. I, I'm good with this one. Shall I, anybody else want to add anything more? Justin, you want to proceed?
Sure. Um, I think we've really kind of dialed this in as we've done with some other sign variances, made it very particular to the property and put some very strict conditions of approval on here. Um, I'm, I'm pretty good with this. So if you scroll down. Um, it looks like you deleted the resolution. So now therefore be resolved.
Okay, I'll make a note to copy it back in.
Um, and then we usually need to cite the uh, plans. Did they have a date on them? Oh, no, we don't need, we don't need the necessary, the plans, right? We're stating very verbally what we're approving. So, yeah.
I mean, there's a version number on it.
So there's a version number and date on the plans?
No, on the, on the, on the packet, the published packet. Yeah. Published.
You can refer to the application dated September ninth, twenty twenty-one.
This one, I, and her packet is dated September fourteenth. We had September ninth. It's the cover letter from nine fourteen. And the drawings are undated.
A part of the application. I mean, it would be nice if they were dated, but.
Hey, right above in that, in item number three. Five eve signs shall be though rectangular in shape. It's that be rectangular in shape. Yeah, all right.
Well, you can always attach the um.
Yeah, attach the drawing.
The, why don't we just attach the drawings that are on pages twenty-nine, that's on page twenty-nine, attach it to the resolution and say those are the signs you're going to put up.
Do that.
Tell me, do you put that in a whereas clause that the application um, illustration is attached?
Why don't you put, make it a condition that they're going to, th- these are the signs that they're going to construct and um, install. Now you have the illustrations. They're on the page twenty-nine.
We're going to attach.
We're going to attach it as a, to the uh, resolution.
So that would be a condition for us. So I don't know if that, does that go here? That's something we're saying we're going to do. We're not making.
No, they're going to do it. They're going to construct the signs as they are depicted on, you know, exhibit A, and exhibit A will be page twenty-nine from the um, packet.
So what if someone was to come, the next tenant of the building was to come before us? Obviously there, they may not want to have signs that say coffee and so on if they're having a bookstore. Um, but they may want to have the five signs there.
Well, why don't we say applicant will construct shi- signs um, in the dimensions depicted in exhibit A.
That's good.
Well, I think we already stated that, right? We put maximum sizes on everything.
It's not quite the same. I, I like the exhibit A here. Well, we'll have it be everything we said plus exhibit A.
Okay. I don't have a problem with, if someone has to come back and look at it um, in the future, that's not a horrible thing.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And just say dimensions and location as depicted. Even better.
Construct and install signs. Yeah. So after construct, put um, on that for their, Rena, put construct and install. Perfect. Okay. Good work, everyone.
All right.
All right. Shall we vote?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for forty-five Shane Place to uh, grant an area variance permitting six signs for the reasons discussed.
I'll second that.
Okay, member Loda?
No.
Uh, member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Katura?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And chairperson Valistra?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for the robust discussion and um, I always think it's healthy if we disagree. Nothing wrong with that. Um, so um, but I think we did the best we could with that and um, all of our considerations and findings. So I don't know if the applicant is still here. People are dropping like flies.
I am.
But um, what I'd like to do with this is get the, since HPB is meeting tomorrow, I'd really like to um, get a draft of these out to them because I think it would make sense so they know what the bounding boxes we put on this are. Um, that may wait on, they're very concerned about precedent. So knowing the conditions of approval placed on this um, may be valid consideration for them.
Mary Ann, hit your hand raised.
I just wanted to thank you all for your thoroughness. I had no idea what this all entailed. So I learned a lot tonight and I enjoyed watching all of your healthy discussion and you know, all the things that you took into consideration. And so for that, I really appreciate it and you know, I just, again, just wanted to thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. We always have robust discussions and even pretty small matters, we can have very long discussions about. So we try to take our job seriously and that leads to good decisions. So I'd agree with all that. Thank you. Um, any other comments from anyone?
Girls are winning.
Yeah. Um.
What's the score?
So Justin, whatever else was on the agenda, could we uh, defer?
I'm okay with that. I'd kind of like to watch the Bills game and I haven't eaten today, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to close.
Um, I'll just note that we sent around some notes on code. I have, I've heard nothing about when the trustees want to discuss any of this. Uh, so I think they're busy. Steve and Marina, does that sound accurate that they're busy with other matters?
There's been a lot going on, but I, I will be pushing the issue of the code here because I, I mean, there are things that I think need to be tweaked.
Right.
So I know this came out late and people didn't have time to review that document. So by all means, review it. And we, if you bring thoughts to the next meeting, then we can discuss it.
Are we going to defer minutes to the next meeting?
Oh, man, I would like to.
Me too.
Has uh, nobody's asked at Village Hall for a uh, speed on the minutes, have they?
Not that I know of.
All right.
Well, they can have the draft minutes.
Oh, good point. Okay. My motion, my motion to close stands.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks.